Okay, good evening and welcome, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, December 3rd, December, to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence for you to think about whatever it is you'd like to think about tonight. Thank you, everyone. If you'd please stand and join Alderman Gripp in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Krupp, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll, please.
Arden?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinhardt?
Present.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Tiedan?
Here.
Jobjan?
Here.
Ann Burkholder?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor.
Thank you. So again, good evening and welcome, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're certainly happy you're participating in your city government, but ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport a better place, especially for the folks in here. If you'd be kind enough to put yourself on silent, simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council tonight on a particular agenda item, please come to the podium at the appropriate time. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body and not to any one individual, and we'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. Mr. City Administrator, Mr. Gleason, anything tonight?
Yes, I do, Mayor and Council. First cycle, more so for the community. I know council's aware of this, but first cycle, every first cycle, we're going to take the opportunity to recognize employees. I'll explain this to the community maybe next cycle, and then this is just going to become our regular thing that we do. But we've got great employees and want to recognize those who get hired the month prior. Those have been promoted internally, and then if we have any retirements the month prior, we'll recognize those as in the first cycle. So here we go. We have Chief Vanderweer. He was hired November 3rd. I think everybody's become very familiar with him. He's actually in the audience. He was a new hire last month. Griffin is a new firefighter along with Teinen, and they joined the fore department in November. Additional new hires, we have Corey that was hired as engineering design and project manager. Jody is a senior accountant, and Jennifer was hired as a residential appraiser. And then we have two internal promotions. Ben was promoted from patrol officer to corporal, and Christopher was promoted to lead plant operator. So, celebrating, again, the city employees want to share this with the community because we truly do have a great team. And whenever we have an opportunity to tell our story, I think the community expects that, and you'll see more of this. I do have one more, and this one, the story behind this is, the city has four new electric buses, and this is part of our fleet. It's an excellent opportunity for this community. We welcomed the media to take a ride along, meet one of our transit operators, and Ms. Angela Lacy, you can see how she has completely taken command of that media platform right there, and gave an excellent interview. That's something that's searchable, but she did an excellent job talking through what the electric buses mean for this fleet. The electric bus program is a six and a quarter million dollar investment, a federal grant paid for about eighty percent of that. The rest came from grants from Mid-American Energy and Regional Development Authority along with city funds. The buses are in service with a noticeably quieter, smoother ride for our city bus passengers. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We have one public hearing tonight under Finance, so Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss. Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I open the public hearing on the proposed conveyance of city-owned property located at 2301 East 11th Street to the Davenport Fire Antique and Restoration Society petitioner, Ward 5. Is there anyone from the public wishing to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And with that, the public hearing is closed. I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. Next, the petition communications. I just want to have a thank you to Public Works and police and everybody that dealt with the snowstorm recently, and it was excellent job on clearing the main roads, and then, of course, after that, getting into the residential. So, great job. I see Alderman Jobjan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. A few things. First, this upcoming Tuesday, December 9th, 6:30 PM will be the next ward meeting at Duck Creek Park Lodge. Hopefully, we have good weather and people can get out, and I'll see you there. We have Brian Chat from our city engineer coming to present that evening. Also, I apologize in advance, my schedule will prohibit me from attending next Wednesday, so I, again, apologize for my absence, and to my colleagues, who will be their last meeting, I apologize I can't be here with you. I thank you all for your time and the opportunities I had to work with you, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I want to say thanks to the Public Works because my street that I live on is pretty unique. I live on a street that they travel on every day to go to Locust, Kirkwood, Easton, Jersey Ridge, and for years, they never did my street. And I want to thank them for actually going up and down my hill and clearing my street as they hit those main streets that they hit. But I have some things that I feel like I need to get off my chest because I have been trying to lay low, and I won't ask a question that there never seems to be an answer for. Learning on the job seems to be the thing going on at the city. We want to talk about the good employees, but the employees are hired to do a service. Not only are they hired to service you guys, they're also hired to service us, and it's pretty interesting when I can't get serviced. I want to also speak about the gentleman and the dog from a couple weeks ago. That gentleman came, and I have spoke to him, and I referred him to legal because I didn't have the answer that he was looking for from a legal standpoint. So now, I have colleagues that have given him my business card and have referred him back to me. I'm not a lawyer. I've never said I was a lawyer. I don't try to proclaim to be a lawyer. I can't give legal advice. I can only direct you where you need to go. So it's interesting that this ball is back in my lap. Yes, I'm still working. I may not have been re-elected, but I'm still working. I'm still out in the streets, dealing with my constituents and everything that is happening in the Fifth Ward. And so I say that to say this, the lies, or should I say the mistruths that are being said behind closed doors, they will come to the light. Every dog does have his day, so it will come to the light eventually, and I can't wait to be another Judith Lee in the audience, to be that person that you guys are going to get sick of because I've sat in these meetings and have listened to all the stuff that we've said and who we've talked about, and now I now will take that knowledge and become, "Hi, Tim Kelly, Fifth Ward." I will become that guy. So I will get on your nerves because I will ask questions. And what I'm also hoping that Mr. Holloway will take away from this, one black man to a black man, don't let these people fool you just because you're black. If you feel like you need to ask a question, ask the question because they feel like one man is turning to torture. We're two different people, so culturally speaking, we're not even the same. We're just two black men in America. So don't let that get, don't let them fool you with that because that's BS. And it's interesting to me that I was told the new focus for the, I don't even know the names of these programs, Dream, Dream Extreme, Dream 2, the focus, I've had so many people apply for this thing five or six times over, so we focus on taking people's houses, but we don't try to help somebody keep their house. So it's interesting to me, this program, because I'll go back to the guy with the dog. If that man was looking for thirty million dollars from the city, you guys would usher him to the front and try to help him out. But since he was talking about his dogs that were taken from him that are his, what is the word when you need them for? I can't think of that word. Companion, whatever it is, service dog, service animal? Therapic, I don't know. I see a therapist. So I don't know what it is when you need that animal in your life to actually get through life, but it's just interesting to me what we will turn our heads to as a city, and it's just, it's ongoing. And I just, I can only hope that you guys said a courtesy for the new council. You didn't give me courtesy, so I really hope you do give those guys courtesies because this is not the same between us. So what you guys have to remember, we are here elected to do a job. They are hired to do a job, so we need to hold them to the same high standards that they hold us to, but we do not. So when you guys get over the fact that we didn't come down here to be friends or look for a brand-new best friend, once you guys get over that, that there's actually jobs and work to be done on the behalf of the city of Davenport, I think we're going to all get along great. And if you guys realize that every single neighborhood wants the same thing, that's one thing that I struggle with. The guy that runs the downtown partnership lives on my block. Who's on my block? You don't see him advocating for the Fifth Ward, do you? No. And I understand that. That's where his wife and his kids are, and I get the downtown partnership is his job, but I would think that I would want to advocate for where my family is as well. I don't know. That's just me. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move to the four areas of discussion. The first one's community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinhardt will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case ORD 25-02, being the request of the city of Davenport to amend Title 17 entitled zoning of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa regarding solar farms as a principal use and freestanding solar panels as an accessory use. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Jobjan?
Thank you. Again, apologize for missed management update. Apologize I'll be missing next week. Just some thoughts here, right? You know, I know we're trying to be as restrictive as we can be, and, you know, with special use, I guess, you know, my position is that we're spending an awful lot of money to extend a sewer out west to grow and expand that corridor between Locust, Kimberly, and I-80. I'd sure hate to see that land gobbled up with utility, utility-based solar farms that wouldn't need a big, you know, big infrastructure investment like that. So if we can, again, be kind of protective of that land in any way, shape, or form so that we can get maybe some better use out of it, that's what I'm cool with, and hopefully we see going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Rick Dunn.
Thank you, Alderman Jobjan. That's exactly, right exactly where I'm at. Protect that land for good development, so, thank you.
Alderman Tim Dunn?
I couldn't have sort of better myself.
I'll kick that horse, but I want to ask questions about the horse before I kick it. So have we really got any resolution or any information on these solar areas? Because I hear what you're saying, that development does need to happen, but what is this? I don't want the generic breakdown either. I want to know, I know I'm on my window, but make it make sense. I don't understand how or where these are going to pop up and where they're going to be at.
Alderwoman Newton?
Thank you. To essentially piggyback off of Alderman Kelly's question, so it sounds like the council is supportive but wants to make it clear that wants to be protective of the West End. So can someone from staff explain how the ordinance presented to council would in fact protect the West End because if it's down to special use and somebody else is making the decision for council, what steps can we take to ensure that, you know, the concern of building these farms out in the West End where we're trying to expand for other things does not take place?
Lower Berkeley Development Neighborhood Services. Your, as structured in the proposed ordinance, your path forward would be to create a land use policy in tandem with this. In part, specific to the West End, we are underway with a land use and infrastructure study. It can be integrated into that. If that is adopted with some understanding on which areas may or may not be appropriate for solar, that would be the council providing direction to the zoning board of adjustment on, there are zoning districts here, but we want to reserve the development that we would have here for that investment we've made out there and future investment we will likely make in terms of infrastructure, but still allow solar in this specific area. So that would be a land use policy you adopt by resolution and associated with the West Davenport land use study specifically.
Question based on that, is there a reason why we couldn't do the two at the same time? Meaning, instead of passing this ordinance and then hoping that a land use policy then gets put into place, couldn't we have such, and, I mean, even if this requires a tabling of one cycle, so a land use policy is put forth so that they're both on the agenda at the same time, and people can then cast their votes accordingly, based on having that to ensure that it is going to in fact protect the West End? Because I know that's a major concern for a lot of my colleagues.
So we could do maybe a resolution intent to do that. The plan's being done by a consultant currently. I think it would, the anticipation is to have it done in the spring. For the overall plan, it's about fourteen thousand acres that they're doing a land use, high-level plan for in addition to the infrastructure plan, and so that would be coming forward in the spring.
So then if that's not coming forward until the spring, would it be more prudent than for this council to table the ordinance, do another resolution whereby we extend the moratorium that was currently been extended but now extended to the spring to allow time for that land use policy so that when the council actually votes on it, they have the land use policy in front of it so that the decision can be made in conjunction with such policy?
That would be an option.
Okay. I think council has heard of that as an option, and that would be one way to ensure that that policy does in fact align with our goals to ensure that we are protecting that West End, which I fully support and echo my colleagues' comments on that. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Ms. Berkeley, if you could come up again, I had some further questions about this. I don't, I completely under, you know, I understand, and when we talked, we talked about the land use, but I guess my question also when we talked was that we have, we have a political situation not within our purview possibly on this, and so, and I don't want, if you're not comfortable speculating, I understand that. But, but right now, so our, what we talked about and what you had said is really our current ordinance is very wide and not, what we're adopting is more restrictive, but something that we feel like in the environment that we're in right now where there is, there is in some quarters a desire to make things, whatever, anything goes, sort of. Are we in danger if we, if we move? And moving the moratorium forward seems logical, but are we in a political situation where this might be seen as a way to stop and get to a point where we get pushed into something, a place we don't want to be where we don't have any say on where things go?
So, I mean, you run the risk of that happening with any action the city takes. The state could say, "You overstepped," and we're going to, because we are, we exist before the state, and so we have some home rule rights that, so we can regulate certain things that other cities can't, and so until the state says we can't. So that has happened and could happen again. There had been some legislation in the last legislative season about solar that would have restricted what we can and cannot do. The, the code that's before you now is fairly in line with that in a lot of respects, but you, you always do run the risk that if you overstep and go too far, the state doesn't like it, they, they can pull it back and say you don't have that right to regulate it that way or at all.
Thank you. So, you know, my, my only, I don't have any other questions of you, but my only concern about extending the moratorium, and again, this is not something anybody can say, is will it be seen as a provocative move as we move toward land use? It would, because we've already done one moratorium that's gone on for a while, so would it be viewed as provocative in some way? That would then wipe out our ability to adopt something that controls it? And, you know, the control that we get in this, in this particular ordinance, would we be able to go back to that? That's a little bit of the worry I have. It will be someone else's to deal with, but just something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Burkholder?
Thank you. I agree. Possibly looking at expanding the moratorium, waiting for that other resolution, protecting the investment that we're, we're making to make our city better on the west side of Davenport. We've spent a great deal and are looking forward to giving opportunities. Most of the land that, that is available is on the west side, and a little bit on the north side, on the north side of Eighth Ward. But looking at the background maps, this is, this is where the land is at. So I agree with possibly extending the moratorium and looking for that other resolution. Thank you.
Alderman Reinhardt?
Thank you. I really think that postponing is probably a better option based on the fact that we're going to have four new alderpeople present next, next year, and during that period of time between now and next year, there'd be an opportunity to answer some of the questions that council has. So I'm in favor of thinking about postponing this. If some of my colleagues feel the same way, I'm thinking that may be the direction we want to take, but again, I'm only one out of ten. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Kelly, a second time?
I'm only one out of ten, but I'm going to put my foot down. Why even kick this, Kim? Because the irony is, the West End has suffered for years. How much more do they need to lose by letting somebody come through and all of a sudden we have a solar farm? And then, so the only thing, because it's bad enough that the southwest has to travel northwest just to go to a grocery store. So let's give this care, let's denigrate in their face, and now we have all this opportunity. What is the proper thing that we need to do? Do we need to take a motion? Do we need to vote? Well, I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this. For what?
Would it be an indefinite postponement, or would it be to a date certain? Do you want to say for so many cycles, or you just want to say, or till the study's done, or some, something like that?
Postpone it till the study is done. So then that council can have apple to apple of what they're actually looking at as opposed to, this is what we have, this is what possibly could happen. Provocative or not, I don't think the West End has to suffer any more than it already has. I don't even live on the West End.
So for the minute taker, I believe your motion would be to postpone this item until the study that Ms. Berkeley mentioned is, till the West Davenport land use study is completed, anticipated in the spring.
Yes.
And so at this point, we're looking for a second.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. All, or are there any comments on the, the motion to postpone? Seeing none, I will give, I will give my, my comments because I didn't get to, and it's related to the motion to postpone. Essentially, right, the, the protection is in place right now with the moratorium. The moratorium goes through February. I was looking back at the dates. The moratorium goes through like the first cycle of February, so we would need to extend that moratorium again if we did not postpone. I'm not like super against postponing. I would say that my, my one concern is, is we've been at this for roughly six months, we're going to ask four new council people to kind of wade into trying to understand solar, which has been a little bit challenging, I think, and so it feels like we reset that process. We don't gain that many, much more protection. The protection right now is really in the moratorium. So as long as you have the moratorium in place, you're not going to have solar going in places that you don't want it because there's a moratorium on it. We also should remember that what's proposed in, in front of us is more restrictive than what we currently have. So if we, right, if we never would have done this, that the land that everyone is concerned about was wide open for, for anything to be put there. So all I'm saying is, I think we should vote on it, but also, I'm not so adamantly opposed that I want to go along with the postponement acknowledging that we're going to have to extend the moratorium as well. Are there any other comments related? We'll go to Mayor Mattson.
Thank you, Chair, for letting me speak. So you guys, many of you, hell, heck all of you know, the, the way you do economic development or a way is to make sure the land is ready and the infrastructure's in place, and so the model was the GDRC and to the north, and that's filled, and that's been twenty years, and so now we're taking the model and going west. And the key to that is that previous councils and this council have said the infrastructure is the most important, so that when someone is interested in development, that, that's, the table is set, so to speak. If you put something in place, anything to disrupt that, that will cause other people, businesses, corporations to postpone. Using the Fair Oaks example, and you guys all heard many people here speaking, to include me, they looked at one hundred and twenty-five sites. Many of the other places that have come here looked at more than fifty sites. The key determining factor is the infrastructure in place. If the infrastructure's in place as what you are doing now to the west is ready to go, then that's going to be a very favorable situation to bring folks there. If there's something else that blocks that, i.e. something that you're considering now, that will be disruptive to folks that are interested. So anything you can do to make the, the table or the area favorable as what you're doing with the infrastructure and what you're considering with postponing or reevaluating land use is probably very critical because without that, you won't have people come. So that's just my two cents worth. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any other comments on the postponement? Seeing none, would you please call the roll? Kelly?
Yeah.
Lynch?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Reinhardt?
Yes.
Tiedan?
Yes.
Gripp?
No.
Newton?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
And Jobjan?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and one no, Chair. All right. Thank you. The third consideration for that ordinance has been postponed until the West End land study is complete, so that will come back to us at some point in the spring of 2026. We will move to item number two, which is a second consideration ordinance for case ORD 25-03, being the request of Leveraged Holdings LLC to amend Chapter 17.08 entitled "Uses of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to Allow Wholesale Establishment as Permitted Use in the C3 Zoning District and Add Principal Use Standards for Wholesale Establishments." Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this? Step to the lectern, state your name and address of ward, please.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. Leveraged Holdings LLC has two employees with one of them being Thad Dearhartog, who is the managing broker and a principal of Mel Foster Commercial Real Estate Services. His bio for Mel Foster states, "He is one of the most prominent commercial brokers in the Quad Cities." It also states, "He has quote, 'held the top commercial real estate sales associate at Mel Foster Commercial Real Estate Services for twenty-three consecutive years,'" and that's very impressive. The application was submitted to rezone all areas zoned C3 throughout the city to allow for wholesale establishment as a permitted use. It was left submitted by Leveraged Holdings and signed by Thad Dearhartog. enclosed by a solid fence or wall, a minimal of six feet in height, including ingress and egress. The standards also prohibit excessive noise or vibrations. Interestingly, areas zone C3 include most of both sides of Elmore Ave, from Kimberly North of 53rd, Kimberly Street, from Division Street to Welcome Way, excluding North Park, and 53rd Street at Eastern. His application states that wholesale uses, quote, "may increase traffic and/or semi-traffic, which the arterial roads in the C3 district are very capable of handling," unquote. There's been no studies that I know of about the level of traffic, especially large truck and semi-traffic, that would be caused on Kimberly and Elmore, especially whether these roads are very capable of handling it. The large trucks would be needed for both the sellers for deliveries and commercial buyers for picking up. We would have these large trucks on Elmore and adding to those already on Kimberly, as well as Eastern and 53rd. I remember there was great controversy by adjacent residents when the old K's merchandise at Marquette and Kimberly wanted to do this, and it was not approved by, approved by council. Wouldn't such heavy truck travel, traffic also result in excessive noise and vibrations? It appears obvious that the principal of Leveraged Holdings LLC and his employer, Mel Foster Commercial Real Estate, would have major interest in changing the zoning across the city to benefit their companies and themselves as one of the primary purveyors of large-scale commercial real estate in Davenport. There's nothing wrong with this in and of itself, but I question whether Davenport would be greatly improved if a large portion of West Kimberly Road and Elmore Ave were turned into warehouses with six-foot solid fences inside parking areas with large numbers of trucks and semi-trailers coming and going. Are our primary roads and arterials actually capable of handling such traffic, as claimed by the applicant? What would it cost Davenport in increased road repair for these primary streets if this was done citywide? Would such fenced wholesale warehouses be supportive of existing and proposed retailers along Kimberly and Elmore? Is this the type of tax base that Davenport desires in important areas of our city? Would you improve this if it included areas in the Third Ward? Council has already approved the division of property owned by Mr. Dearhartog and C3 zoning on North Elmore into two plats, because the storage garages weren't lucrative as he thought. Is that platting preparing for a wholesale warehouse in the Elmore area? Are the streets accessing that site capable of handling heavy trucks? Is that the kind of development you want in that area? I suggest that council turn down this wholesale, wholesale zoning change in such a large area of the city, and at a minimum, request a detailed traffic study, effects of noise and vibration from heavy trucks, and the cost of increased road repair on our key arterials. I absolutely request that this zoning change not be rushed through with a suspension of the rules, as requested by Mr. Dearhartog through Alderman Group. There is no need or rationale for that. I believe council, with staff support, need to do some more study and consideration before making such a large-scale zoning change that would affect the character and aesthetics of important Davenport retail areas. I request that this be put on further discussion, and that these studies be done and be thought through very carefully. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council with comment. Alderwoman Burkeholder.
Thank you. Elmore and 53rd. This is where the, a lot of this district is. Didn't we just approve a school in this area, too? If we're gonna have heavy truck traffic for warehouse, that's kind of a concern. I agree. I don't think that we need to rush this through. I think we, we do need to talk about it some more. So I, I think this needs to be put on discussion, so we can have more information.
Are there any other comments from the council? All right. Seeing none. I do want to point out that 53rd and Elmore is a special overlay district that has special oversight over the design of, of that. So this idea that, you know, warehousing is going to go there, not under the current zoning restrictions, that's not the case. Also, going back to the, the property at West Kimberly Road and Marquette, yes, there was a rezoning in 2013 that was opposed. The use for that was heavy truck trafficking, warehousing, and then, but there was another rezoning request that came through several years later that was ultimately approved, that did allow small warehousing in it. So from, from that perspective, we've dealt with this. This has gone through our staff and through planning and zoning, and I believe it was a unanimous through P and Z that this was an acceptable use within the C3 zoning area. I personally don't have any issues with it. It only takes one, one alderwoman to, to say, keep it on discussion, and, and we will. If there is any, if there's any change of heart by next week, I would still consider suspending the rules and voting on second and third consideration this, next week. But being said, Alderwoman Burkeholder has a concern, I will not make that motion tonight. Seeing no one else, we'll move to item number three. Resolution of support for the submission of an application to the State of Iowa High Quality Jobs Program through a partial property tax exemption for improvements to manufacturing facility Electro Freeze HC Dukes &amp; Sons LLC is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Alderman Reinards, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you. Make a motion to postpone item one till the spring. Place item two on discussion, maintain on discussion, and item three to move to consent.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. Our agenda has been set. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinards. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 5, four-way stop intersections of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa," by adding East 3rd Street at Leclerc Street. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none. Anyone from council? Seeing none. That item will move on. Item number two. First consideration ordinance amending Schedule 6, speed limits of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa," by adding West 83rd Street from Northwest Boulevard to its western terminus as a 30 mile per hour speed zone. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none. Seeing none. Anyone from council? Seeing none. That item will move on. Then we have item number three. Motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read all of these under Section A, license, annual license renewals. We have Hotel Blackhawk, 200 East 3rd Street, license type Class C liquor on premises. Steel Plow Burger, 1430 East 52nd Street, number three, outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. And then last, Hy-Vee Food and Drug Store, 1823 East Kimberly Road, license type Class E liquor carryout. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none. Anyone from council? Seeing none. Then I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
I'll make a motion to put all items of public safety on the consent agenda. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderman Tim Dunn. Next area is public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the East Locust Street Grand Avenue to Eastern Avenue rehabilitation project by Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $1,370,465.21. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the Emys Park Phase II Adaptive and Inclusive Playground Project by Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $677,694.27. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the Bus Barn Charging Project by Rock Island River Electric of Colona, Illinois, in the amount of $385,802. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number four is a resolution accepting work completed under the Ridge V Drive Cedar Street to Pacific Street Reconstruction Project by Five Cities Construction Company of Covalley, Illinois, in the amount of $376,605.67. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number five is a resolution accepting work completed under the 2025 Sidewalk and ADA Ramp Program by Kelly Construction of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $349,897.54. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
I won't be not voting on number five. Do you do a conflict of interest?
Alderwoman Burkeholder.
Thank you. I have reached out to staff and asked the resolutions or, or the work that's being done, the ADA, the sidewalk, all of the, the easements that are disturbed. I wanted to make sure that we are having the contractor go back, make sure it's not six-foot weeds, they're not settling to where there's dips and holes. And so I have been assured that we are going to do that for all of these projects. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number six is a resolution accepting work completed under the 2025 Sidewalk and ADA Ramp Repair Program by Leveraged Services LLC of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution accepting work completed under Dubuque Street, East 29th Street to East 32nd Street Mill and Overlay Project by Taylor Ridge Paving and Construction of Andalusia, Illinois, in the amount of $218,328.88. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution accepting work completed under the West Lombard Court Reconstruction Project by Airdworks LLC of Long Grove, Iowa, in the amount of $217,984.90. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution accepting work completed under the CY 2025 Pedestrian Curved Ramp and Retrofit Program by Leveraged Services LLC of Bettendorf, Iowa, in the amount of $166,391. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none. This item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution awarding contract for the Occupational Health and Wellness Clinic Project to Bush Construction Company of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $738,680. And before I ask for public with comment, I'm going to ask Alderman, or Attorney Huff to give us a statement, please.
Thank you. So before discussion begins on this, I, I wanted to address the conflict of interest question that has arisen a couple of times throughout the discussion on this project. In some instances, members of, of council may have family members who are city employees. Because this clinic is proposed as an employee clinic, those households would be eligible potentially to use the clinic under the same terms as all other city employees and their dependents on the city health plan. Under Iowa Code, Chapter 68B, and Iowa case law on conflicts of interest, a disqualifying conflict generally requires a direct, substantial, personal, or financial benefit that is different from the benefit received by the public or by a broad class of similarly situated persons. Here, the clinic benefit would be offered uniformly to all city employees and their eligible dependents. Any incidental benefit to a council member whose family member works for the city is shared with a large class of employee households and is not unique to that council member. Based on my review of the Iowa law, it is my opinion that this situation does not create a conflict of interest that legally requires any council member to abstain from participating in the discussion or voting of this item. Each council member should, however, consider whether they are personally comfortable acting in the best interests of the city. If any member believes their personal situation would impair that judgment, they may choose to abstain, and that abstention should be noted for the record. I now turn the floor back over to the Chair for discussion.
Thank you. Now, open it up to anybody from public.
Good. Dan Goos, Eighth Ward. First, I want to commend you all for this. This is something I tried very hard to do when I was on the school board, knowing that when we go into next session, property taxes are going to be a big discussion. A lot of people don't realize, property taxes pay for a lot of things. Medical is probably your number one. Police, fire, your public safety, all of that stuff. This is a huge thing for you guys to be forward-thinking and doing this, knowing that property tax discussion is going to be coming, and potentially impact your budgets. So this is a huge thing. I applaud you all for that. I know I've seen a lot of negative things on social media and stuff, but a lot of people don't know, because they're not elected and they don't see how budgets work and things like that. I, myself, personally, one of our plans went to where we have our own facility to go utilize. It, the return on investment is huge. It might not be right away, but in a few years, you will see that return on investment. So, good for you all. I applaud you, and thank you.
Cheryl Shagina, Third Ward. And I could be one of those people that was making a little noise on social media that he was referring to, because what I am learning from Iowa Code, Section 68B2A, is that it could be considered an outside activity for an employee, and that it could create a perception of a conflict of interest. Additionally, when you look at the council meeting minutes from September 11th of 2024, members shall not take advantage, shall not take any special advantage of services or opportunities for personal gain that are not available to the public in general. They shall refrain from accepting any gifts, favors, or promises of future benefits which might compromise their independence of judgment or action or give the appearance of getting compromised. Members at all times shall act in accordance with Iowa Code 68B22. Section 101, the use of public resources, members shall not use public resources that are not available to the public in general, such as using city staff time. And the contracted employees would be considered city staff, and therefore, you would be using city staff time. It's not available to the public in general, such as city staff, equipment supplies, or facilities for private gain or for personal purposes. Under Section 362.5, there are 12 exemptions to, exceptions to, or exemptions to the conflict of interest in what falls under a bid, and whether it's competently bid or not. But it also has to do whether this contract for a purchase of a service, which benefits a city employee or officer, if it benefits that officer or employee with a cumulative total purchase price over $6,000 in a fiscal year, it's not exempt. So therefore, it becomes a conflict of interest. Also, recusing, not necessarily abstaining, but a recusing where a personal interest exists. State ethical law prohibits using public office for any private gain. That's a conflict of interest. Regarding the building itself, the, as medical costs arise, so do the potential costs of settlements and judgments. Right now, we are capped at $1 million for non-economic liability malpractice issues. And that's only for adults. For minors, there is no cap. But that also will increase as the medical costs increase, as settlements and judgments increase, which will factor into your premiums as your malpractice. We were already told by city staff that your claims are going up. So we can use what has happened in the past as a predictor of the future. So we can use what has happened in the past as a predictor of the future, that our claims will continue to go up because having a medical clinic onsite onsite is not a magic bullet. It is not going to fix anyone just by walking into the medical clinic and getting quote-unquote faster service. I was shut down on October 1st and told I could not talk about certain things because you were not spending the money. Now you're talking about spending the money. And as you talk about spending the money, people did make comments that because it was only being used by city staff, that it was not in fact something that the public supports. One of the words or the quotes that was used was, "What is good for thee should also be good for me." Wants versus needs. You can want it, but do you really need it? I heard comments about retaining and getting good employees. You cannot compare to Arconic or John Deere because those are profitable companies that have international customers, and I understand that their medical facilities are not onsite. People have wondered about the staffing. Is it really convenient? Or how is it that you're even prioritizing a wellness center? It is unimaginable, unimaginable, when you're taking money away from the Salvation Army and other nonprofits in the area, kind of without notice. Situations in which it is unacceptable or a conflict of interest includes...
Next, please.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. I was kind of stunned when I saw the cost it was going to be to build some walls inside an empty building, three-quarters of a million dollars. Davenport already pays a full-time nurse at Public Works who can take care of basic needs and do triage for more complex situations. All Davenport employees have, and you folks, have excellent health insurance benefits for themselves and their families. I know this from experience. It kept me alive. Davenport staff want council to approve spending nearly three-quarters of a million dollars to transform our large open building at Public Works into medical offices. After approving the construction, Davenport staff then will want council to later approve a contract for medical contractors to provide some as-yet unidentified level and kinds of healthcare for employees and their families for an undisclosed amount of money every year. I assume we won't be hiring radiation technicians for x-rays on top of the costs associated with medical insurance and the nurse, and we know how much we have to pay for medical insurance. I've seen no data or even information identifies how much money is spent when an employee goes to urgent care and how much would be saved with this construction and contracted medical care. The return on investment wasn't clear on what they were trying to say and seemed to be just based on the cost of construction, not including the contracted medical care itself. A question. Why not just keep the nurse and contract directly with a local urgent care company? There are at least three just in Davenport. To provide such care, including vaccinations, family care, physicals, as well as radiation technicians and medical lab tests that these urgent care facilities already have and have the contract provide that Davenport employees and their families get expedited care within 30 minutes, let's say, of arrival? And cut out the whole having a contract and people onsite. I'm just looking at this as a project that has not been, to me anyway, clearly thought through, including what the total cost would be from the beginning to the end before being placed on the agenda. And it's an overall project that's been segmented into construction with three-quarters of a million dollars with unknown costs for the actual contracting and operations of that site. Now, it's easy to blame you folks because you approved the last budget last spring, and that was in the budget. There was one small paragraph, and then there was one page, and it only included the construction. I looked it up. Not the operations. Once we spend three-quarters of a million dollars to build a bunch of rooms, are we then also forced to move ahead with a contract for the operations, considering perhaps sub-costs? I'm just thinking, this is the time to think this through before you commit to three-quarters of a billion, a million dollars for rooms without looking at the costs and the benefits of the entire project. Not anecdotal, but detailed calculations that tell you what you will gain and what we will lose from this, and how much is actually going to be duplicated with what you already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please keep this on discussion.
My name is Matt Leanan, Eighth Ward. And I say this statement, I actually am the alderman-elect for the Eighth Ward, and I started my orientation on Monday. And just for the record, I did not opt into the City of Davenport Insurance. I have my own through my current employer. So as I say this statement, there's no conflict of interest. I'm just telling you firsthand what I know because my local union had a clinic, has a clinic, that started approximately three years ago. And I could get into all the benefits of, you know, employee morale, employee retention, attracting employees to the City of Davenport. This is a big deal that it's a benefit that is immeasurable. But when it comes to cost of something like this, and I understand the concerns, the public's looking at the short term, three-quarters of a million dollars, and I understand that's a lot of money. And they're looking at potential staffing costs, and if you hire a third party, what that's going to cost, and I understand all of that. But where the clinic saves you money is all it takes is one catastrophic medical occurrence that is prevented by the clinic, such as, hey, I have high blood pressure. I have high cholesterol. I didn't know it. Me personally, I was stubborn. I didn't go to a doctor until I was 40 years old. Or you're prediabetic, whatever the case may be. When you find out early that you have this condition through going to a clinic such as this, the clinic will pay for itself long-term. All it takes is a half a million dollar claim, heart attack, stroke, whatever, and the clinic will pay for itself. And I've been coming to these meetings, well, I've been coming to these meetings and talking for 10 years or so. The last six months I've been coming here, and I've got questions about certain expenses. This is not one of them. This is return on investment. Yeah, it may not be measurable in a dollar amount, but what cost is it that you save when you save somebody's major medical, you know, it's immeasurable. You can't put a cost on that, and you'll never know because you prevent it with a clinic like this. And that's, in our experience, cost of insurance is going up. It's sky-high. And a clinic saves, by preventative measures, a clinic saves, it has saved our local expenses. It just has. So I'm surprised that this is getting so much negative thoughts. We want the City of Davenport to be an attractive employer for the citizens of Davenport to say, I want to work for this city. I walk in every Wednesday, sometimes more often, and we've got jobs posted out there, openings. And if this is something that you think is, you're not getting, come apply for one of these jobs. We, this is something that's going to attract employees by having a clinic like this. This is not something that we should deny. This is a very good benefit, and I'm proud that my city is thinking about opening this clinic. And I stand in full support of it. As I said before, I elected not to be a planned participant. My family's not going to go there. I'm not going to go there because I got a clinic through my employer, but it's a good idea. And I'm proud of my city to be forward-thinking enough, and we should attract, make this place, the city, a good place and have people want to work for the City of Davenport, and this will help that with morale and retention and attraction of young talent. I can't believe we're even having this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel? Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. So, Mr. Elect, let me tell you why I have some concerns. Union, you get to opt in. You don't get to opt, not everybody gets the option to opt or opt out when they, because when you need insurance, you need insurance. And another thing, when you have constituents calling you every day, you'll understand. Because when you can't give them the answer because you don't know the answer, and all you have is a brief paragraph from a financial meeting at 8:30 in the morning on a Saturday when you're extremely exhausted and the binder is this big and you have to go through that. So I can't wait for you to jump on board and see all the things that comes with it. So, because at the end of the day, it'll be you that they turn to, the constituents. They don't turn to the employees. They don't turn to the people that brought this big beautiful thing to life. They don't do that. They look at the person that they elected, and you will be that person. So, just so you know, that's where some of mine comes from because I have to listen to this on a normal basis where people are calling me, asking me questions, and I don't know. I don't have an answer. And I have to ask, is this the original money that we allotted, the $700,000 or is this this, because I have so much going on with me that I haven't paid attention. Is this the original money? The 738?
Clay Merritt, Engineering and Capital Projects. So the budget that was set for the project that was in the capital improvement program is a million dollars. And so this is part of that original. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I just wanted to clear up some of those, some of the comments that were made and why some of us sit on the fence sometimes just because when you have to answer emails, text messages, and phone calls from your constituents that are asking you questions that you don't have a full gamut of answers for, it's a struggle, just so you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lynch.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple brief statements regarding this matter. You know, I have, when I first ran for this position, I spoke to the Teamsters Union in length about the struggles that they're facing in retaining employee, hiring them, attracting them to begin with, and then retaining them. And, and they spoke in length about the financial facet of it and where the, you know, the medical, the insurance and the benefits that the city offers is one of the only saving graces because their wages are lower. Now, when you think about that and you turn it into, if you can think about long-term ROI, so yes, this costs money now upfront, yes, there will be fees added later on, but then I've read some of the reports, and data doesn't lie. It's just very data-driven. It is forward-thinking. I used to work at John Deere, and I was union, and we had the same type of care there. And I saw, I saw the morale that that brought to employees. I saw the safety and the immense benefits it gave the business, the company, and its employees. Yes, the City of Davenport is not-for-profit, which I fully understand, but the City of Davenport does need to figure out how to maximize their dollars and save where they can so we can keep reinvesting into our community, so we can offer higher wages at some point, so we can bargain, negotiate, and give more back, right? That's, that's what this will do. It's, it will without a shadow of a doubt do it. $738,000, you know, from a construction standpoint, it's nothing. It really isn't. You know, that includes plumbing, electrical, HVAC. It's not just throwing up walls and framing. You have to pull permits. You have to hire painters and subcontractors, and that money will go very fast. And there's a lot that goes into building out a suite for an entire facility for patients to come see. I can speak about this as an employer even with my HVAC and plumbing business, shopping for insurance, shopping for healthcare to offer our employees, how intricate that process is and how so incredibly difficult it is, if not close to impossible, to explain those intricacies to our employees and how we try to budget to offer those services to them. So yes, I know these numbers seem scary. I know this concept is very foreign right now, but I fully support it, and I am so excited that I get to be here to vote on this one item, and I'm so excited to watch the greatness it will do for the City of Davenport.
Thank you. Alderman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. So I go back to when Brandon Wright was our finance director, and we were sitting down, and one of the things we asked him, you know, what are the, what are the big threats to our financial stability? And the number one threat was, was healthcare costs. And over the last 10 years, what our, what our staff has done is continued to bring ideas to what they call flatten the curve. But healthcare rise like this, we want it to rise more like this so we can stay in line with it because our budget does not rise like this. It rises very slowly at around 3%. So healthcare cost has always been the thing that we need to control. This is not new. This is not something that we're inventing. This is a best practice. The private industry is doing it. The unions are doing it. The City of Rock Island did it in 2013. So this is not new. We're not inventing the wheel here. We're looking at tools in our toolbox to control healthcare costs. This is good for the bottom line of Davenport. It's good for our employees. I fully support it.
Mayor Mattson.
Thanks for allowing me to speak. I'll just say, we've had a couple of briefings on it, PowerPoint projections, and presented to the council and the benefits, and anytime we can think outside the box, and one of the gentlemen, Mr. Gosse, said it, and you've heard me speak about it, there's a lot of things coming that future council is going to have to do with. So anytime you, whether it's budget issues, healthcare issue, anything you can think out to help with that, and this will help with that, you should take a strong look at. But this has been discussed a long time, over many years, and many briefings by the current folks to this. So I only see benefits, and I'd encourage you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you. If, Ms. Gerlach, could you, or would you be willing next week to briefly recap, or if you can now, I'm not going to put you on the spot, the PowerPoint that you did, I believe we did this management update where we also looked at the, some of the, something that hasn't been discussed tonight is the complication and the way, and the loss of work time going to and from outside medical and all of that. Would you be able to talk about that briefly next week? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you for my second. So I didn't say I wasn't against it. I was just trying to explain to where a lot of my concerns come from. So let me clarify that first. Second of all, you guys are talking about all this money that we're going to save. We're referring a lot of stuff out as is. So what about, what about major things? What about things that people have to go out and follow up with? So I hear what you guys are saying, but I'm telling you, I get posed all these questions from my constituents, and so all I have are these questions that I want to give to you guys. And I know we've had briefings and we've had PowerPoints, but that, you can say it till you're blue in the face on what you're going to tell people, what it costs to build a room, to expand a room, to re, to equip the room. We get all that. We get that. We understand that. We, we're not saying that we don't understand that. What I'm trying to explain to you, my questions that continue to be, because right now, we refer people out because we only have a nurse. So what happens when we have some of these major things? You guys are acting like everything is going to be in-house. Are we going to put splints on legs and cut off the bleeding and, and apply pressure to the bullet wounds? What are you guys talking about? I'm just, I'm, make it make sense. I hear you, but do you hear what I'm saying? There's some major things that could actually happen because a lot of these folks work out in the element. Things happen. Last week, we had three un-alivings that, you know what I mean? I don't want to put that on anybody, but you guys are making it sound like we're going to be the end-all, say-all at this clinic for our employees. Help me. That's all I'm saying. I didn't say I was against it. I was just telling you where my concerns come from, from all the calls, text messages, and emails that I get. That's all.
Alderman Jopkin.
Thank you. Yeah, it's not an end-all, be-all, right? There's always going to end up, you know, having to be referred out, but, you know, the basic, the basic cost of care, DOT physicals, all these annual physicals that are required that cost, I don't know, $300 a pop that you can pay a doctor, I don't know, $100 an hour, nurse, $50 an hour. Boom. Get two of those physicals, three of those physicals done in an hour, and there's, let's say, round numbers, $900, $1,000, and you've spent $150, simple cost savings. So of course, there's always going to be those extra, extra costs out there, and there's going to be referred out, but you're going to still get significant savings from just the basic level of care that's going to be required that we're spending, that that cost continuously goes up at an exponential rate. So we're capping it. It's good. I don't know if I can help you figure it out, but there's that embedded data for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jopkin. Anyone else? Seeing done this item, we'll move on. Item number 11 is a resolution awarding contract for the engineering services for the protect mound... Mount and River Drive Flood Mitigation Project, HR Green of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $251,872.07, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation concurrence. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing done this item, we'll move on. Item number 12 is a resolution approving the authorization and use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for a temporary construction easement associated with the Protect Second and Gaines Flood Mitigation Project. And before I ask for public comment, I would like to have Director Merritt come up and, cause we have several of these on the agenda tonight.
Sure. So for this particular agenda item and some of the ones to follow, um, when we want to perform construction and to do so properly, we need, uh, to go beyond the existing public right-of-way. So that means we're getting into private property. If we're gonna do, if we're gonna get into private property, we need to make sure we're in agreement with those owners and we compensate them accordingly. Um, our goal, um, with all of our projects that we perform is to always, um, do our best to try to meet those property owners, um, in the middle when we talk about compensation or changes to the, their particular site. Um, and currently right now, for, for this particular project and these other ones, we've hired a consulting firm, uh, who specializes in this, uh, to help with those negotiations and those are moving forward. Um, however, in the event that we're not able to come to agreement with these property owners, uh, in order to move construction, the construction project forward or to move the project into construction, we're not doing construction now, um, we would then need to go through a condemnation process. Uh, and this step allows us to be able to do that. Um, I would like to say historically speaking, um, in going to condemnation, it generally falls in two buckets of the reasons why. Uh, bucket number one is we can't, um, come to an agreement with the property owner on financial compensation. Uh, I think the last one we did, uh, the, I'm not going to give specifics, but the last one, I think they valued their property hundreds of thousands of dollars. We had a third-party, um, uh, a third-party, uh, realtor and an appraiser look at it and it was maybe worth $60,000. So clearly there's a huge gulf in differences in this and we're not able to make that up. That's where the condemnation board comes into play. Um, or the second item, and this is more often than not, is we reach out to property owners and we simply can't, we can't have a conversation because we don't get any responses, whether through phone calls or letters or any other type of, um, a way to get in contact with them. And that may simply, and historically this has happened, they're just simply out of state. And so getting in contact with them, um, but kind of having that, um, this process in place helps us do that and move it forward. Cause, um, all of these projects, um, or I'll refer to the one specifically that you read, Chairman, is, has federal funding involved. And so until we've acquired, um, all right-of-ways associated with it, we cannot go out to bid. And if we can't go out to bid, then we can't move forward with construction and, and create the public improvement. So that's a, a general, um, broad of the process itself. Happy to answer any questions you have.
So we have, we have affirmances actually out.
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Anyone from the public?
Thank you very much. Uh, Mike Motto here. Um, in my capacity is president of the Board of Directors at German American Heritage Center, 712 West Second Street. So we own the building there at Second and Gaines. No objection to, uh, temporary construction easement. That's just fine. Our only concern is the project in and of itself, our building gets struck by vehicles coming off the bridge more often than you would think. Um, under the project, there's no distance between our building and the street. And so we would not be able to build our own protection. We would need the city to put something there to protect our building from, uh, vehicles coming off the bridge. We're in, we're in, uh, discussions with the city. We've got some good discussions going on. We have not reached an agreement that we found to be acceptable. Um, just wanted to come today and let everybody know that we're doing that. Um, we look forward to continued cooperation to work that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel. Seeing done this item, we'll move on. Item number 13 is a resolution approving and authorizing the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for the right-of-ways and easements associated with the Protect Marquette and Second Street Flood Mitigation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
I'm Shane Hallman. I'm the owner of Collins Holdings. I am, uh, affected by this. I find it hard to believe how, I understand what that gentleman is saying, that you might be able to condemn our place, but I've not even been contacted by anyone yet. So why would you approve an authorization to condemn my property? We're a small disadvantaged business. We moved here from Buffalo, Iowa back in 2020 into a building on 3rd, 1129 West Third Street. And now we're being told we're going to be displaced and possibly condemned without anybody even contacting us. We received a letter two or three weeks ago and that's it. And then we get this notice. Be hard for me to, if one of you had a property that says, well, we're gonna give you a letter, nobody's gonna reach out to you, and then we're just gonna say we're gonna condemn your property. That's hard to stomach for somebody like myself. I understand there can be difficulties for different property owners, but if, I don't know if I'm the only one that has not been contacted, but I would think there should be something going out before this resolution was authorized and passed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, my name's, uh, Jim West. We're right next to him. We're on the corner of Third and Marquette for West Side Sales. We got a letter too, just like him and kind of going off what he said. The worst thing about it is not knowing anything. You get a letter in the mail that says a hundred feet this way, a hundred feet that way. Like we've been in business for 58 years, longer than I've been alive. Our family has been in business. So you start thinking about it and then you're like, well, a hundred feet down east of Marquette Street this way is the whole parking lot. And like, I get that there's easements on the sidewalk and stuff like that. And you start looking at things like five feet to you guys isn't much, but like five, 10 feet to us is a lot. Okay? And I've heard, it, there's no, like the one thing that we want to hear is like absolutes, like not one person's ever shown like a diagram of absolutely, this is what it's gonna look like. I've heard they're gonna raise Marquette three feet higher in the air. I've heard they're gonna put retaining walls up. I've heard a bunch of different things, but absolutes I haven't heard. Okay? And like for us, for a car, like I think of it in car lengths because we own a car lot. So if I have to move a car back 10 feet, for us, that's devastating because it's gonna take almost our whole parking lot. Okay? And like we're right where the two ways just started. So, and like our building sits back, but the, all the information I've got just by talking to neighbors, cause they got letters in the mail. Okay? But it's just, like one guy's telling me, oh, I talked to one guy and the road's gonna come up to here to my door and I gotta move my door to the side because the road's gonna be high and they're gonna wrap a retaining wall. Well, for us to have a retaining wall blocking all of our cars, what good is that for us to have a car lot if you can't see the cars? I don't know if that's true, that they're gonna put a retaining wall up, like down Marquette Street, around Third and Second, but if they are, for us, that's no good. You know, but there's, but I don't know. It's all hearsay. And besides just getting a letter in the mail that's saying, hey, this is gonna happen, uh, that's like, like a crappy way to go about doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Paul Voskis. I am the Alderman-elect for the third ward. Okay. This is my take on that because I was involved in that fight a long time ago. The city came at that time to do a partial condemnation proceeding on my ground to do the West Side Diversion Tunnel. And they simply said, we're going to do this and this is why. All right? I disagreed with it. I asked several times of the people that were involved at the time, what's going on? What's the scope of work? Let me take a look at it. Let's talk about this. Nobody even tried to do that with me. So the first time I ran was because of that. You know, it's like, I'm a property owner. You're taking my property or you're contemplating it or there's gonna be compensation, but I didn't know anything. The questions I asked, no one answered. And it forced me to draw a line and we ended up in a court fight. It's a fight I did not want. It's a fight that I was forced into to protect my property. I understand what these gentlemen are saying completely. Before, to me, it's communications. Before you approach with these ideas, talk to the people, find out. Every foot is important to those people. The ground that I had, which the city told me, I was simply hobbying, did it for no, no use at all and no value, cost the city some money. Plus a state penalty because the difference exceeded a certain percentage of what the initial settlement offer was versus what the jury gave me. Okay? It's not a fight I wanted. Believe me, I'd rather been left alone. And I tried to tell them that. I understand hydro, uh, the hydraulics about it, the water, the flow. I understood all that, but nobody listened to anything I had to say. Nobody gave any merit to my opinion. And it created a battle I did not want. So I understand these gentlemen. And, and to everybody involved in that process today, I don't know how many are still there, that needs to be considered. In everything you do, and this is what I want to try to do, we need to talk and we need to listen. And I don't think that happens. And I still think that's a lot of the problems that we face. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before I open this up to counsel, Director Merritt, oh, please go forward.
Hi. Uh, George Orton. That's the engineer. I only have a question. I don't have a problem with anything on here. I just need to know where I can get in contact with the engineer. He was up here.
That's, yes. Mr. Merritt, could you, uh, make sure you get these people squared away?
I'll catch up with you after this then. That's good. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Lynch.
Thank you. Um, let me, I just let me start with, I very much applaud staff and what they do and the level they operate. And I didn't realize the amount of talent we have, um, at the city of Davenport because I have also had issues, um, with property and things of that nature prior to this position. So let me just leave with that. Um, and they do a wonderful job. However, what I do in this capacity, I work directly with directors. Um, I don't get a chance to work with, um, the folks that work underneath them very often because they're the people I go to right away. So with that being said, I just want to express that I do believe that there is a lack of appearance of empathy in situations like this. And I don't know if there's any way that we can implement a better system to notify our constituents of these things. If we know it's going to be a block of people, perhaps send out letters and ask for a special meeting so we can explain what's going on because I would feel the same way. By raising the letter and all of a sudden they said they're going to take, they could take some of my property, immediately that puts me in the defensive and that creates animosity and hostility and it creates anger. And I think that's how a lot of legal battles start in the city of Davenport between, uh, the civilians and the constituents and, and the city. I've seen it firsthand. Um, and I, I do fully empathize with what these gentlemen are saying. And I would like to ask, I know obviously I'm also on my way out the door here, but if there's any way that we can implement a different, more empathetic and educational method of delivering this type of information, I would hope that all of these brilliant people can get together and come up with something a little different and please relay that back to the rest of my soon-to-be former colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lynch. I agree. Anyone? Alderman, do?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I will echo the comments by Alderman Lynch. Um, I think as a perspective of a, a business owner that decided to buy a building in the city of Davenport, um, to make that my home front for my business, I can't help but agree with the business owners that, you know, if they're, they're getting a letter, next thing you know, this is on an agenda item that we may, and I understand this is the may, not that that's what the city's gonna do, but if contact hasn't even been made with these property owners, that's an issue. I mean, there should be more than just a letter sent. I mean, I think it's, it's simple to pick up the phone and call the property owners and try to get something fixed before they're seeing an agenda item that says, we may condemn their property. I think how we do business certainly needs to change and take into consideration that small business is the backbone of our city. So I would certainly encourage staff to, and to talk to these property owners before they leave here today, um, so that that can be addressed. And the one question I do have for Director Merritt is, on these agenda items, why do they come before council, before we know for certain whether or not such is necessary? Meaning at this point, there's still negotiations. It sounds like some property owners haven't even been contacted or contact been actually made other than a letter being sent. Why is it before us at this time as opposed to at a time when if you would actually say, hey, we actually need to in fact move forward because we weren't able to reach an agreement like the two scenarios that you brought forth?
Sure. Um, so what I'll do, um, so I'm, I'm not speaking necessarily out of turn. I'll do some research and send back to you specifically of the DOT process. Um, my recollection off the top of my head is they actually prefer that you do this step very early on in the process, even and sometimes maybe even before the negotiations start. Not that I necessarily disagree, um, or agree with that notion. Um, and then I will say as well, uh, so in, in talking with our engineers, um, my understanding is our consultant had reached out and has spoken to everyone. So if that had not happened, I apologize. I'm, as soon as we're done with public work items, I'm happy to, um, be out, um, outside the council chambers and I'm happy to talk with anyone, get their information. And then I will make sure instead of working just with that consultant, that we'll make sure we'll work with our staff and we'll get them all the answers that they're looking for.
Thank you so much. And thank you for providing that. Cause I think that's important for them to understand too, the process of why then it's before here. Cause I could understand as a, as a business owner and a property owner, if you just see that pop up on an agenda and it's referring to your business, why that would bring a concern to them. And certainly they wouldn't be here saying that no one's talked to them if, you know, that wasn't the fact. So I appreciate you taking the time to talk to them afterwards. Thank you, Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. Attorney Huff.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to address your question a little bit further. Um, and Iowa code also kind of lays out some of this as well. Um, in order for, in the negotiation process for, uh, this to even be on the table to move forward, it has to be done early. It has to be done before really negotiations begin because if it's not authorized then and the negotiations fail, the code kind of, code and case law kind of indicate it's not really an option down the road. So in order for this to even potentially be an option, it has to come at the very early stages of this process, which seems unkind, not empathetic at all to the situations that we're putting people in. Uh, but I think it's just so that there is appropriate notice to the parties that this is on the table if negotiations can't settle it. Because there are other parameters about what the city is allowed to spend when it's talking about land, uh, when it's talking about the fair market value of things. And so, um, it wants everybody to have that anticipation of here's everything on the table that, that could happen in this situation. And they want that at the beginning. They don't want that to come, oh, hey, by the way, we didn't reach a deal, I'm gonna take your land now. They, they don't want that to be the, the sentiment. So that's why they, there's a requirement for it.
Thank you. Alderman Burkholder.
Thank you. Um, listening to, um, getting letters in the mail, did they have a name and a phone number and an email on them that you could contact the city?
I grew up the public.
Sorry. Um, that is one of my biggest concerns is that, um, we as a city have excellent customer service. Um, our, our citizens are our customers. So we need to take that additional step. Even, and I understand that the, the legal and the law and everything you said, Attorney Huff, um, but I still think that we need to be a, the best customer service that we can give our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you. Mr. Merritt, could you come back up? I just, perhaps since we have a number of people here, uh, it might be good to get, to get some timeline as well. Um, and I, and I had, I believe there was a phone number and contact in those letters. Um, I had gotten a call from someone and I think they told me that. But, um, in any case, but and, but it's good to go out there as well. And sometimes it's easier to certainly talk to people in person. Could you, um, as we, you know, as happens often, um, with these projects, um, I mean, the most recent one of course is, uh, the work on Third Street and the next year, Fourth Street. But, um, what, what, what is kind of the timeline even for the design of this? Um, can you tip, can you give us a little, so this may be something that would be of interest as well tonight?
So Second and Marquette specifically, um, I believe it was early, I'm gonna say January, February, I believe it's in January of this year that the council approved an engineering contract, um, to be able to then design all of this. Um, and so now we're to the point of having done, um, both preliminary and getting close to final design. Can we actually hone in on what specifics do we actually need that fall outside the public right-of-way? Uh, and- Uh, and now obviously we're in December having these conversations. Um, our, kind of, we touched on a little earlier, our goal as a city is to come to, um, a resolution with those property owners. We don't want to be heavy-handed. Um, it, I will say in having, going through condemnation, um, that's not the end goal. Because then, you know, I'm speaking selfishly for my, myself, within we're going to follow into construction. And we're going to still be in contact with these property owners, um, regardless of where the project is located. So we want a good working relationship so that we can have constructive back and forth, especially as we get into construction. For instance, if we're reconstructing your driveway approach. We want you to be able to be able to reach out to us, our inspector, our project manager, um, management team, or the head of our construction, and do so in a constructive way. Typically when you hit that condemnation, it, that's negative feelings come into effect and that's never productive. So our goal is to do that. Um, not necessarily there's a timeline on when we have to, if we're, if we have to go to condemnation. So it's not like from the day something goes to, um, a, a specific three months, six month kind of thing. It's kind of at the city's discretion so we can continuously have ongoing conversations. At some point, it's whether or not we feel that, um, uh, something can be jointly agreed to. Um, is, is whether or not we, we decided, in this case, uh, conversation isn't going anywhere.
In terms of plans that could be shared, um, what's the timeline on those? And is it possible, I, you know, is the, uh, Gaines and Marquette are here and we know this is all part of the, you know, it's across, you know, mound and, you know, certainly in, um, Fifth Ward. Is there, um, is there, um, a way to, that a timeline where this could be shared? Um, in sort of a meeting format, which we've certainly done for other kinds of.
So, um, what we can do is we can actually, um, once again, I'm going to go look back at state code, make sure everything's compliant because there's federal funding involved. Make sure we're in compliance with both state code and, um, the Federal Uniformity Act. Um, if we can have a public meeting, yes, we're happy to do those things. Um, if the three gentlemen that actually came up here and spoke, um, like I said, I'm happy to get their contact information. Um, we'll reach back out to them, share what we have, um, with them, answer all their questions as best we can.
Right, and these, do these plans have to be, do you have to take these plans in through the state and the federal? Do they have to approve these or what's the process for that? I know in some cases they do go beyond just.
Yes, so because, um, this particular, um, project, as with most of these, um, have federal funding involved in it. The state is actually our intermediary, which is why you see the state being involved. And so we don't deal specifically with the Federal Highway Administration, although we have a contact. Um, so the state does review these plans, they do approve these plans, um, and because of the funding, they will bid these plans. So from a timing perspective, much like a Third or Fourth Street or West Central Park, which is on here, or really any of them, um, we have to be able to have, let's say we have a final set of plans that are completed. Um, we have to have a checklist that goes through, um, and hand to the DOT, um, for their final review and before it gets on their bid schedule. Um, typically, and then one of those checklist items is you have acquired all the right of way easements necessary to perform the project. If we don't have that, then we can't check that box and we can't turn in plans. Once you turn in plans, uh, I would say typically, the timeline is you probably get three months to get in the DOT's queue for bidding. Uh, so let's say if we turn something in, let's just say for, for fun, in December, chances are you're probably getting bids back in March or April. That's when, the next time that the city, that's the, um, that I would come in front of you and said, hey, we've six, hopefully, got successful bids. Here's the con- here's the contractor, here's the value, you would then appro- um, you would then, it's up to you, uh, to approve. We then go through contracts and we go through all the good paperwork. And honestly, construction likely to happen the next two months after that. So it is a time-consuming process. So from a implant, just an implementation standpoint, um, the longer we, this, this process does take, the longer we wait for the public improvement to occur.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you for my second here. Um, I, good, thank you. But I, uh, just, do you mind sort of coming back up real quick? And you, I see you have that letter in your hand and just for, I'm, I'm curious to, um, is there actually a contact person or phone number on that letter?
The phone number's for Public Works, so it's just a.
A general Public Works number, okay.
There's no email, there's no phone number.
Okay, and no one to ask for, or, okay, perfect, thank you.
And we actually received, so we own four parcels. The first letter we received said they were going to take all four parcels. And then we got a letter like a week and a half later saying they're going to take one. But the one is the building.
Got it.
And like, I mean, it just is, like I said, it just seems very heavy-handed.
Sure.
As a small business owner, when the city says we're going to condemn.
Yes.
Before we've seen any plans or seen anything. So I understand maybe there's laws in place or whatever, but a simple conversation would be great.
Thank you for sharing that. And I, I also agree, um, it does feel heavy-handed, it feels like the city's straw alarming you and that's how I would feel. I would feel like the city's being a bully and they don't want to work with me, they want to work against me. And again, creates more animosity and hostility. Um, so I would also like to add, I would ask that in the future, we sign those letters with a, a human, like, you know, let's put a name to it and an email. Um, also, I think this is a very teachable moment because I want to clarify something that, uh, Mr. Merritt said, that he was not aware that, uh, certain notices were not sent out in a certain timeframe. And I think that's so important because I, I hope everyone can, can hear what I say, that each person has somebody above them. So there's a chain of command. And if the next person above them doesn't know something is happening or it's broken, they cannot fix it. So when you have an issue with any one employee or someone at Public Works, know they have, they have a boss, right? And just go to their boss. And if that boss doesn't help you, go to their boss and just keep climbing the ladder because you will get to a director eventually. And that director will listen to you, I can guarantee you that, they will. I've watched them do it in the past two years I've been here and they want to help. They cannot fix it if they do not know it is broken. So just please keep that in mind, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number fourteen is a resolution approving and authorizing the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for the right of way easements associated with the project Third and Leclerc Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number fifteen is a resolution approving and authorizing the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for the right of way easements associated with the Eastern Avenue over Goose Creek Bridge replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number sixteen is a resolution approving and authorizing the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceedings if necessary for temporary construction easements associated with the West Central Park Fairmount Street to Lincoln Avenue Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Second Ward. Um, I first want to, wait, hang on, let me get my notes here. Um, I first want to note that, um, I am in full support of the project as a property owner along West Central Park Avenue. Obviously, it's a road construction project, there's going to be short-term noise and short-term inconvenience. But I believe that in the long term, it'll result in a quieter and smoother West Central Park Avenue. Uh, I would also like to note the, the transparency from the acquisition specialist. Once I did reach out to that acquisition specialist, I was provided a detailed snippet of the plans detailing how, uh, our particular property was going to be impacted. But I will note, um, uh, based on, actually in regards to some of the previous comments, that I did have to kind of poke around and, and, uh, and find the correct channels. And, but once I did reach out and get to that correct channel, I got very good feedback and, um, and very precise feedback on how my particular property was going to be impacted. But I did have to do a little bit of research in order to find that correct contact point. So I guess my note would be, um, in these initial, um, in these initial letters that we receive, having those, uh, more direct contact points can help alleviate these initial fears, initial potential misunderstandings. Um, and then we can get that exact, um, contact point so we can get the information we need in regards to how our particular properties are going to be impacted. Now, as a property owner along, uh, West Central Park Avenue, are there any particular, um, is there any new information? New, uh, pertinent information that we as property owners, uh, need to know in regards to this project? So that we as property owners can help the city kind of move this project along smoothly and efficiently? Does any information yet or would we just kind of wait to get another letter? Is there anything new that we should know about?
I would ask Director Merritt to get in contact with this gentleman as this project moves forward.
Cool.
Get his contact.
Fantastic, yep, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I, I'm not in the U.S. and I live at 2604 North Denver Street. My house is on the side of the West Central Park. And that road has been ignored, I don't know if it's ignored or just not enough money or whatever, but it's really in bad shape. They do a lot on Locust Street, they do a lot on Kimberly, but like West Central Park, we have semis going back and forth all the time from Phoenix closures, from Hy-Vee, uh, beer plate, beer trucks, Pepsi trucks, whatever, coming through there. Not every, you know what I mean, not all the time, but when I'm there, you know, and then my ring doorbell, it shakes my property so much, my ring doorbell goes off in the back occasionally. I mean, those roads are bad and I worry about people with motorcycles. I mean, that area needs to be done really bad. Now, I didn't get in contact with anybody, but there was emails, people to contact, phone numbers and everything else. I just figured I'd come to the meeting. But, you know, and then the following meetings. But anyway, we rea- I'm really for this project. It, it's long overdue, public safety.
Anyone else? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seventeen is a preliminary resolution for the twenty twenty-six alley cost share program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, counsel. Seeing nobody, this item will move on. Item number eighteen is a resolution setting a public hearing to establish a public utility easement on city-owned property located east of Eastern Avenue and north of East Twenty-Ninth Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I would like to make a motion to move all eighteen items to consent.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes Public Works for this evening, Your Honor. Thank you, Alderman Dunn, Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly. I'm going to pause, uh, for a ten-minute recess. It's seven twelve, so twenty-two, right? Um, go do your thing or whatever you need to do and then come back. So we're in pause for ten minutes. Okay, thank you, everyone, uh, for allowing us to take care of whatever we need to take care of. The next and, uh, final area is finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch discuss, Alderwoman Newton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight on the finance agenda, we have a lengthy agenda, we have fourteen items. We'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. Item number one, third consideration, ordinance amending chapter six point oh four entitled Animals of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to incorporate community cat recommendations from the Joint Task Force between the Humane Society of Scott County and the City of Davenport. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, item number one moves on. Item number two, third consideration, ordinance amending chapter twelve point seven two entitled Conduct in Public Parks of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to update language and requirements outlined in the Iowa State Code, Chapter seven hundred twenty-four point twenty-eight. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, item number two moves on. Item number three, resolution authorizing the conveyance of city-owned property located at twenty-three oh one East Eleventh Street to the Downport Fire Antique and Restoration Society petitioner. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, item number three moves on. Item number four, resolution awarding a five-year contract for employee benefit brokerage consulting services to Assured Partners of Davenport, Iowa for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand annually. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, item number four moves on. Item number five, resolution ratifying the Behavioral Health Services Agreement with the Iowa Primary Care Association, otherwise known as Iowa PCA, to provide fundings for a crisis intervene intervention officer. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number five? Anyone from council? Seeing none, item number five moves on. Item number six, resolution approving a one-year coresponder services agreement with the optional one-year renewal with Vera French Community Health Center and the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number six? Anyone from council? Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to say thank you so much for everybody that worked on it. It, it's been wonderful for four day, for four days now, we're extending to set this is, and, and the continuous thinking outside the box and working with folks and organizations to support the, um, thank you, counsel, for, um, this consideration and everybody as part of it.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, seeing no one else from council, item number six moves on. Now, item number seven, resolution approving the Small Community Oriented Renewal and Enhancement Score Program and authorizing the city administrator to administer and execute program purchases. Um, before taking comment from the public, I will take a cherished privilege, because I know there is an amendment to this that I believe Alderwoman Lynch would like to make a motion for.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton, I'd like to make a motion to amend as follows. Whereas the score program will replace CISP effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Any remaining unspent CISP funds will roll into the score program and must meet the score program criteria.
Is there a second? I hear motion and a second, I would ask, uh, for roll call.
Can you send me that language, Alderwoman Lynch? Thank you. Reinerz?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Grit? Newton?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
R. Dunn?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Urckholder?
Yes.
Anne Kelly?
Yes.
That is ten yeses.
Thank you. Now, item number seven, as amended, is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Um, I did have a question about this, um, uh, in the case of, of the, um, and I know this changes, uh, will change dramatically, what, um, all their folks are going to be able to do with CISP funds. Um, and I understand the rationale for it, but in the case of where, um, I'm an outgoing person, there's money committed that isn't spent yet, what happens to it? Or that will, you know, so it's been committed to people, uh, but they, the way it works, it doesn't pay down until it's spent. So are, are, are they, have they lost it? Or can it be given out ahead? I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to violate any of the rules, but this is a real issue, um, that some of us might be facing, not all.
Special for Lex CFO, so historically, what happened with that money is that it rolled to the near-elected official so that they had that, those funds to spend, um, in their award.
That doesn't answer my question. Okay, so I say to, um, I work with a group and they, and they're asking for something, um, in, for Valentine's Day, a Valentine's event. And I say, you know, make your application for that. But they, they are not, that's not given to them, it doesn't sit in a bank somewhere. It, it, it actually doesn't go to them until the receipt's given.
Correct, so, um, in that instance, if there is a pending expenditure, we can certainly obligate those funds towards that expenditure.
Okay, that would, you answered my question, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from council wishing to address this item? Seeing none, item number seven moves on. Item number eight, resolution approving the agreement and release from the estate of James W. Victor. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, ward or address.
Cheryl Shagnoff, third ward, I did attend the management update meeting yesterday. And what I understand was with your request for more information, with the discussions that happened regarding this, that, per city administrator Gleason, that limited email correspondence. He was able to find only limited email correspondence. So I'm wondering if you would please ask staff, if you could ask the director of Parks and Recreation about the meetings and why did the meetings fail? We don't have that information, we only know that the meetings failed for some reason. So if you could get the director up to help us understand better why Parks and Rec was not able to find a sufficient place for this fountain, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, ward or address.
Judith Lee, second ward. I have also not received information from the FOI I put in, and I sent all you the questions I asked, which mirrored Alderman Newton's questions. And I don't know when that'll be filled, so I'm basing my comments on publicly available information. Also, full disclosure, in my trust I provided for the Figgy Art Museum, and they have accepted multiple pieces of original art in my possession. Another disclosure, I am not a lawyer. So with that, it appears that there's the potential that multiple laws may have been broken through this whole seventeen-month thing that may be going back to twenty eighteen when Mr. Victor passed away. So I'm concerned, open meeting laws, because of all this, including seventeen months of discussion by a team that concluded a Davenport Alderwoman, the Davenport Parks and Recreation, met outside the public eye an unknown number of times, decided they could not reach an agreement, and apparently waived Davenport's right to a charitable donation outside of the public eye again, including outside of the City of Davenport and the City Council. Conflict of interest. There's a person who was on council as well as on the Figgy Board of Directors, who represented apparently the city in these discussion and apparent decisions while simultaneously serving on the Board of Directors. Who is she representing? The city of the Figgy. The agreement that your corporation council provided for your approval states that the City of Davenport and the City of Department of Parks and Recs irrevocably, quote, "and unconditionally release and forever discharge all obligations," quote, "occurring or arising on or before the date of this agreement and relating to or against multiple parties," including the board of the Figgy, which would include an alderperson, and you were on it for a while, it recently disappeared, as well as Kyle Carter from the Downtown Davenport Partnership. Three, estate laws. The council has no authority, I would believe whatsoever, to override the authority of the District Probate Court, which is apparently not approved. This transfer and the spending of the funds intended for the City of Davenport to a third party that was not part of the will. What date did the will go into probate? Did the City of Davenport ever receive any documentation regarding the probate of this will and the money coming to it? Four, in the agreement, whoever wrote it, I assume our attorney, conflated the Figgy Art Museum with the City of Davenport. The City of Davenport has art that is under the responsibility and care of the Figgy, but in two thousand and five, it was given up by the city, and the Figgy is now an independent five oh one C three. So that has no relationship to what's happened during these last seventeen months. Five, conflict of interest in allowing authority for city decisions to be made by entities that weren't involved at all, including the fountain per the will, including the Downtown Davenport Partnership. And he is also on the Figgy Board of Trustees. Was he included because of his involvement with the Figgy as a member of the board? And the sixth one that I'm concerned about is the misappropriation of money donated clearly and directly to the City of Davenport through the Parks and Recs Department, since the money was transferred by the estate to the Figgy without the public approval of the council, and the Figgy Art Museum's already spent the money on artwork as well as a party that was in the agreement between the estate. Outside of the stated desires of the deceased in his will, can the transfer and spending of funds belonging to the City of Davenport be considered a misappropriation, especially since all actions again were taken out of the public eye and contrary to the will that is probably and apparently still in probate in the District Court? So you should never, in my opinion, have been put in the position as counsel to being requested to ratify a document that has what I believe to be serious legal ramifications several months after the agreement with the, between the Figgy and the estate, the money being spent, the big party being held, private party, by the way, the agreement says she'll have hors d'oeuvres, and the spending of funds that was intended for the City of Davenport. The entire situation needs to be further and deeply investigated regarding the role of all the parties listed in the draft agreement and the release before council and determine how various laws may have been broken.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, ward or address.
J.J. Condon, third ward. In Detroit, I happened across a fountain on Belle Island, and it has the inscription on it. It says, "A continual hint," sorry, "a continual hint to fellow citizens to devote themselves to the benefit and pleasure of the public." And the gentleman that gave the fountain put that inscription on there. And I thought that was really neat. These are my personal feelings on it. Mr. Victor apparently was so fond of this community that he had a million dollars to leave and, and he wanted to devote it to something for the benefit of the public. And it's really hard in this day and age to do something nice. It, it gets overcomplicated, but in the end, I think the, the spirit of his wishes were honored and, you know, in, it's very popular right now to demand accountability and transparency, but what I'd like to demand more of is positivity. This was a wonderful thing and, you know, again, some unfortunate that it's so hard to do something nice these days, but I just didn't want it to be lost in the shovel here that Mr. Victor loved the City of Davenport so much that he wanted to give back to it for, for the benefit of the public. And, and I think, I think that was accomplished. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing no one else from the public, is there anyone from counsel? Alderman Rick Dunn?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick, couple of quick questions for the city administrator. Was staff aware of all this and when was the council made aware?
To the first question, Alderman Rick Dunn, for this current iteration, staff was not aware until mid-August of this year. And then as far as the second question, I have every reason to believe that this council, this seated council was not aware of this until it became a management update conversation Tuesday, November eighteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, and you're gonna, you guys will have to bear with me and I'm gonna be reading something. There were, I was called in at last week's meeting and there were, I, there were people speaking about me and it's, you know, like people can paint different pictures, but it was about this. So one woman stood up and spoke about this. There were a couple of people who spoke about this. And so I wanted to share tonight, and I don't like making things about me, but I, again, it's been, again, someone has stood tonight and put together information that, you know, again, sometimes it is, it's information, but it doesn't form the picture of what was really there. And I think it might be interesting for people to know this. This, I, this is only my part of this, and I wanted to go through that and explain and try to paint a picture because there's so many people around this dais that weren't here, that, you know, we're not, we're not here. There were, our current mayor was not in this mayor seat. We don't have people here. I think Mr. Krupp is probably here, but he wasn't doing his, this job then. So I'd like to go through this. And I want to start out first by talking about the, my position at the Figgy. Davenport's agreement with the Figgy includes a designated seat for an elected official of the Board of Trustees, and I assumed that seat after my election to city council. So I was not on the Figgy Board prior to being on city council. I was asked to serve on that seat. We, others of us serve on different seats in different organizations. There are people in the Putnam Museum seat. And, and just for clarification, I don't believe Mayor Madison has never been in the Figgy, has been on the Figgy Board, so I don't know where that came from. But I believe it's similar to the Putnam Museum as well as other outside organizations. And I, again, joined the Figgy. I was asked to join the Figgy in, in, in the seat that is there because we have a relationship with the, with the Figgy. And I'd also like to point out that as I conduct my business, when the old code of conduct did not explicitly require when I came on council, electors to remove themselves from private boards, I opted at that time to resign any community boards I was on because I did not, in my role as a city council person, have to, want to have any conflicts of interest. So the only boards I am on are ones assigned to me by the, as a member of the city council, and that's what I have done for the last eight and a half years. I'd also like to point out for those who aren't aware of this, that we do have a code of conduct that we adopted last year, and it requires us to avoid using official positions to influence government's decisions for own private gain or the gain of persons or organizations with which they are associated personally. However, it does go on to state that this does not preclude a member acting in their official capacity from serving on a board. So that covers those of us who either opt or are selected to serve on boards, and there are many different boards that I'm not a member of, that does, that, that excludes them. So I offer this as background, but actually, this has very little to do with the matter before us regarding the Jim Victor bequest. Because from my perspective, as it was, as I was, came into this project from the very beginning, the request was not presented as a gift to the City of Davenport. And in fact, I don't believe the will talks about, it does talk about, I've seen the will. I hadn't seen the will. I didn't see that, any of that information when I first was asked to be involved with this. But it is a fountain in the City of Davenport. It does talk about Parks and Rec, but it says a fountain, it doesn't even say a fountain in a City of Davenport park, but of course, that's what one would hope for. In any case, my, I do have emails, I have city emails and a very few personal ones that bear out what I'm going to tell you now. And I will have a copy of these remarks to share. In January two thousand and nineteen, there was a planning process for the area that has been named Main Street Landing. Now, we're all very familiar with that, but, but back in the day, back in about two thousand and eighteen, it was sort of dubbed Main Street Landing, and there was a planning process. Some of the people around council, on council were, were involved with this planning process. There were community members. It happened to be held at the Figgy. It was a lot of different people and it was, and I was, I participated as a member of a community task force, in part because third ward includes the downtown area, which does make sense. And the idea of creating a park at that location, a discussion that had been going on for fifteen years before that, and remember, I'll remind you again, I was in my fifties when I went to my first meeting about this park, before I ever thought about being on council. I see nods of heads over there. This has been a long discussion. In any case, so the idea of creating a park at that location, discussion that begun at least fifteen years before was very public. So when, in two thousand and nineteen, this was, it was very public. We had just come out of this planning process. I believe council, but this was presented to council. I think I still have the, the PDF. It was, RDG was an Iowa design group that had been selected to recommend things for the park, and this park has evolved in that way. Sometime in February or early March, I couldn't find the date of when this happened, there was a fundraiser at Duck City Bistro to raise funds for a city park, downtown city park, and I attended that. And it was at that meeting that I first met the brothers of Jim Victor, Mike, Mick and Tom Victor. I don't really remember the specifics, but I'm sure that I talked about Main Street Landing to them because we were looking for funding, because once we had looked at it, it was like now we have to raise the money for this. And that was before, this was before COVID money, it was before any of the money from the state. It was how do we start to develop this? So very much on my mind, certainly. Several weeks later, on March twenty-sixth, I received an email from Mick Victor. The other person that was copying it was Steve Arons, who is a staff liaison for the Riverfront Development Commission, inviting us to join a task force that he and his brother were assembling to lead a discussion on what a fountain might look like. It would appear that our email came a day after the initial invitation was sent because it said, and the email says, and would like us to also serve. So they had said, "Our brother has left, has left money for a fountain in the City of Davenport. We would like to ask you to join us to be on that task force." This was the brothers that sent this email. And I responded that I would be honored to serve. And again, Main Street Landing was very much in the forefront of people's minds. You know, Mr. Victor passed away suddenly. I don't know if it was in his head and his thoughts when he left this wonderful bequest and to the city, but it was, or not left, left this bequest for a fountain in the City of Davenport. And so in the email, he mentioned their brother's wish was to build and maintain a fountain or a water feature in the City of Davenport. I accepted the invitation. I did not see any legal documentation. I did not, was not given the will, didn't expect it to be given the will. And there were two meetings of this task force. There was one on April tenth and one on June twenty-fifth of two thousand and nineteen. The meetings were led by Mick Victor. They were held, happened to be held at the Figgy. I don't know why they were held at the Figgy. It was, I guess, an easy place to meet. It was in view of the river where this park was going to be. Maybe that was part of the thought process. The task force was comprised of people selected by the Victor brothers, including people from ARX, a woman who knew Mr. Victor, and was a close friend, people I had not met before, Steve Arons and myself. They were creative brainstorming sessions. Mick sent out the materials of various projects. We looked at pictures of fountains. It was, they were very, it was about what the fountain would look like. It wasn't about where it was going to be. It was sort of what are we trying to achieve with this fountain? So they were creative sessions. Those, and those discussions did include conversations about Main Street Landing. But between April tenth and June twenty-fifth, Davenport experienced a breach in the temporary flood wall. At that time, the family was eager to move forward with the project and expressed concern that development of a fountain in Main Street Landing could not happen in timely fashion. And that's within notes from Mr. Victor from this meeting. Mick followed each of these two meetings with a recap of items discussed. The task force itself did not meet again after those two meetings. They, the follow-up notes came in early July. Now, I did get an email from Mr. Victor on, on June sixth, concerned about the breaching and what that would do, the timing of putting a fountain in Main Street Landing. If that was, and again, Main Street Landing was an idea at that point. He, he mentioned that he had been by Lindsay Park when he was visiting Davenport. He had happened upon the East Village in Lindsay Park. He was taken with the idea of putting a memorial there. And so that is not in third ward. And at that time, Lindsay Park was set up between Fifth and Sixth Streets. I agreed to set up a meeting with the alderfolks representing that area. I told Mr. Victor I would be moving off of this, you know, because it is a different ward and I didn't want to overstep. Rita Rossin and Rich Clue were the alderfolks there at that time, the area, that area being split then. And so he had suggested a time to meet, and I reached out to them. There's an email that confirms this. I set up a meeting for June twenty-fifth. We met over, I think, at Largo Most Señas. I handed them off to Mr., to, I handed him off to, to, to the, to alderfolks, and I, I don't have any follow-up emails from them. I didn't hear anything more, wasn't in contact with anybody. I received a call from Mick letting me know they were still discussing Lindsay Park on August sixth, but they were interested in other parks at that point. I reached out, I sent a note to Corey Spiegel, I copied Chad Dyson and Steve Arons, set up a meeting for Chad and myself on August twenty-third. And we went to Sunderbrook Park, we went to Lafayette Park and Cork Hill Parks, and we ended back up in Lindsay Park. This is on August twenty-third. I took some photos, which I forwarded along to the brothers. I was busy with many other things during this time. I was, that we had a task force on the spring flood breach. I was heading up the community task force on marketing the upcoming twenty-twenty census, and I was pretty busy. I, the last time I had any contact with the Victors that, over this time, was, so I sent the pictures, I got to thank you, and I forwarded on November eleventh, I got a, an email from Parks and Rec, Design for Riverfront, River Heritage Park, which was, which was, had gotten an award, the design had gotten an award, and so it was, hey, this is maybe something. I don't believe, I don't have any response back from them. And then on February seventh, I received an email chain from Steve Arons, who was, of course, the employee involved with the Riverfront Development Commission, and it was an email about what had happened in their discussions with the folks. And I had told them, Lindsay Park, and we had had this discussion. and we had had this discussion at one of the meetings, that it was, it had a friends group, it was a historic park, things like that, it was not a blank slate. And so it was that they had very, it was basically, they had very disappointing responses, and they saw their ideas being rejected, and they said, we are not going, we're not going to, we're going to put a pin in this, and we're going to pursue other things. That's the last, so I didn't receive that email from the Victor, Victors, I received a copy of it on September, on February 7th of 2020, and that was the last communication I had from them on this project. We know what happened in March of 2020, in 2020 and 2021, it was COVID, and then sometime later, though, it was maybe 2022, I couldn't find the invitation for this, I received a call from the director of the Putnam, inviting me to visit and see updates there. She mentioned the museum was through a Victor bequest, establishing a fountain on the east side of the museum, I assumed that the family had moved on, and I was, didn't say anything about this, because remember, I never saw the will, I never saw that it was, that the bequest, it was to build a fountain, so it was their money, I felt very badly that, that something couldn't be found, I don't know what their experience was with Lindsay Park, but I felt very bad about that, but it was their, I saw this as their money to move on. And so I didn't say anything. And then in August of 2025, I received an email from the executive director of the Figgy, was about some paperwork connected to a bequest. I was not aware or not involved in the selection process at the Figgy, that is not the way things are typically happen at the Figgy, there is a, there is a process, there's a procedure, I am not on the executive committee of the Figgy, I'm on the Board of Trustees, and there is, and there is an acquisition committee that meets, and it's a very structured format, and I was not a part of that, and so I received this paperwork, I passed it on to cities, our city, then the city administrator, and to Sam, I'm sorry, our city attorney, to say, you know, it looks like, and this was, hey, I'm having problems getting this finished, that was the first I knew about that. And then in, at 2025, at the Figgy Board of Trustees meeting, Figgy Acquisition Committee brought to the Board of Trustees a recommendation to acquire several gifts, including two art pieces from the Victor family, and we voted to access the pieces, this is a process that's regularly used to, to acquire pieces of art. Again, I was not involved in discussions regarding the Figgy gift, that would not be unusual, you know, an art museum frequently receives very large, either discussions ahead of where a Board of Trustees might know, this is not something that would have been discussed generally at the Board of Trustees meeting, so I wanted to share that with you tonight. You know, I certainly, it would have been wonderful had this been able to come to a city park, which again, was not, that's not what it said, it said the city, you know, you know, a park in the city of Davenport. But I feel that, I feel like I had to say this tonight, because these men, this man left dead, leave a wonderful bequest to this city, to be somewhere in this city, wherever it was. The brothers did this with love and caring in their hearts, and I, I am, I am disturbed by how details have been conflated and assumed to be one way when they're not, and so I, this is, this is very difficult, and I know it's difficult for the city, so there's, I know there's still lots of questions about this, I don't know what other emails might have been at the city, I know what emails I was involved with, and I know I have a group from 2019 into early 2020, and I have some starting August of 2025 and ending in September. So those are my emails, and those are, those are, that is, that was my involvement in this, so I'm sorry to take so long, but I felt from, I was in the meeting last week, I was calling in, comments there, comments here, I felt like I needed to address this tonight, I wasn't sure I was going to, but after hearing what was presented, I felt like I needed, so sorry to take so much time. I have copies for everyone on the dais, if they would like.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. So I have a couple of problems with this, and my problems are, what's disturbing is when we have folks that ask questions, and we have aldermen and alderwomen that get on the defensive, so we didn't see the will either, so let's just put that out there, we didn't see the will, but the interesting part for me is, if the man said the city of Davenport, the Figgy is not the city of Davenport, we give enough money to the Figgy, we give enough money to a lot of folks in the city of Davenport, and I'm not knocking the Figgy, so every time I open my mouth, and I, it's just facts, I'm never, I'm not knocking the Figgy, but I'm just, it's interesting to me how this money can fall into the lap of the Figgy with the help of certain individuals, that they're all funded through who? The city of Davenport. Downtown Partnership? City of Davenport. Figgy? City of Davenport. But yet still, we're supposed to sit up here with limited information and have smiles on our face, and take the limited information that we have and ratify something that we don't know much about, so it's just interesting to me that every time they say stuff like, of course, of course, I'm just, I'm thrown off, that we're supposed to be a positive force for some monies that was left to do something positive in the city of Davenport, and not everybody, A, accesses the Figgy. A lot of people don't even know that anybody can go to the Figgy. There's some people that don't know that because it looks so beautiful and so prestigious that people don't know, the Figgy is an access to every single person in the Quad Cities. Let's put that information out there, you know what I'm saying? Let people know that they can come see some of these exhibits, as opposed to people going, oh, no, no, I'm not going to sit up here on these last few weeks and smile about this with this limited information, this man said for the city of Davenport. One hand don't know what the other hand is saying, one hand don't know what the other hand is doing. The city of Davenport, to me, is the city of Davenport, I don't see the Figgy anywhere in what I see the city of Davenport, no disrespect to the Figgy, once again, but we've found enough money to the Figgy Museum through the city of Davenport, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My opinion on this is pretty simple, and that is that I support releasing the estate from the fountain. I have never been involved in this project, although I was aware of it because you hear conversations in the community that, you know, people are talking about this potential for a fountain. Yes, I wish we would have had a fountain in a city park, like I, for me, that's the best outcome. However, I respect that the Victor brothers and their belief that this is the best way to honor their brother, and I think it's an acceptable solution that it stays in the city of Davenport, albeit not in a park. And I think the last thing that the council should do is try to enter into a legal battle with the estate to try to get that, that fountain, I just, I don't think that is a good idea, and for those reasons, I would support the release, thank you.
And thank you, Mayor, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to add a few, couple of comments, people have said stuff about me, so I've never been on the Figgy Board, I've never attended a Figgy Board meeting, I'm in the Putnam Board, I have attended Putnam Board meetings, I don't attend all of them, but I attend some, there was discussion, my predecessor brought information that the, that the Victor brothers were interested in maybe doing something with the Putnam, it was discussed, looked at a couple of times, nothing ever happened with that. I met with the Victor brothers once, with my predecessor, to offer thanks, that they're interested in doing something with the city of Davenport, or some entity that their brother left money, and I just wanted to say, boy, that's a really nice thing, and we appreciate anybody, so my role was to thank you and wish you the best, and however I can help, and that was my only contact ever with them, but never been on the Figgy Board and never been to a meeting, so thank you. And I know nothing about this until it came on the management.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor, Alderman Lynch.
Thank you, I just have a quick question, because I was not here yesterday and did not review the video, so I apologize, which may be a good thing because I'm hearing this for the first time, and truly fresh eyes. Just to clarify, do we know for sure that the estate says verbatim that the funds should be used per the late Mr. Victor to a fountain in the city of Davenport? Can someone answer that question?
I'll just read you the term of the will.
Thank you.
Okay. 5% to fund, build, and/or support a new fountain within the city of Davenport, the project to be selected and managed by the Quad City Arts and Davenport Parks Department, that is the full term of the bequest.
5%.
5% which roughly translates between $900,000 to $1 million of the estate.
Got it. And the brothers then decided to take those funds and donate to the Figgy instead?
I wish I could tell you what's in their mind.
Is that, I mean, because how?
That seems to be the, that seems to be what we can piece together, is that at some point, they made a decision to go to the Figgy and discuss the purchase of the art with the Figgy. Until their attorney sent me the release and the other documentation about this, and along with Doug, we were unaware that any of this was going on. I don't believe, and we cannot find any other record that shows that my predecessor knew more information than that at any point. He may have, but I cannot find a necessary email that says him and Mr. Snap engaged in any kind of reasoned information.
And if we can test this, and we say no, the will clearly states that the funds should go to the city of Davenport specifically for a fountain, we are then entering into a legal battle with the estate, is that correct?
So if, if we, i- if the council, I shouldn't say we, if the city says, we do not accept this release, it, the, the estate will then go into probate court and ask the, usually ask, what they would do is what's called the side press doctrine, and they would ask that the court declare that this provision is an impossibility, impracticability, something of that nature, and that it should be released from the meaning of the, the words written on the page, and that they should have a more expansive reading of that, so a piece of artwork that depicts water maybe fits in. They, but it's on them to make that, and we would have to be the respondent to that. So that's the way this should work, that's the way, if they wanted to move on, in my legal opinion, we, that should have been done maybe in, in early 2018, is if it seemed impractical for this to happen, there should have been some more talk, and, and maybe with the court acting. There just doesn't seem to be, and nothing has been presented to show that that, those conversations happened, I think the Victors were trying to honor their brother's wishes. Do, if you ask my legal opinion, I'd say we need to have an executive session to talk about strategy.
Okay.
To go into it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I, yeah, I, just from a personal standpoint, I think that we should, anybody at any point in time should obviously respect the wishes of a loved one and how they choose to spend their money, just, that's very, very cut and dry to me, and I think that we should place this on discussion, and there's that, so, thanks.
Thank you. See, if there's no one else, I do have a few comments, one, I fully support this matter being placed on the discussion agenda for next week. Two, want to make it clear, when this item came on the agenda, I asked a series of questions, lots of questions, I took time to look at the proposed release they wanted the city to sign and so forth. As we sit here today, I did not get all the answers to the questions, but it is my understanding that part of that is because the city doesn't have all the answers to those questions. From the limited information that the council received, it appears that the major notification essentially to the city came sometime August 20th of 2025, and such came through our previous administrator, who then forwarded on to our attorney with certain directions. One of the things that I found very interesting is the email sent to, well, sent to our attorney, but not directly to our attorney, if you see the email addresses on that email, so it's unclear when our attorney would have received it, but from the attorney representing the estate, the correspondence not only reiterates what the will said, because I, too, like everyone on council, have not seen the will, so I'm operating based on the information that we have provided, and the information provided, including a copy of the email sent by the estate's attorney to our attorney, indicates that the 5% was to support a new fountain within the city of Davenport, the project to be selected and managed by the Quad City Arts and the Davenport Parks Department. Now, what's even more interesting is that within that same email, it indicates that with Davenport's approval, the attached agreement would be presented. Again, that would require the council to give approval, so my concern with this is how this matter has been handed, handled, and it's clear that such not, is not only within our own staff, but more so how it's been handled by outside actors making decisions on behalf of the city of Davenport, who are not in a position to make the decisions for the city of Davenport. If you want to make decisions for the city of Davenport, I recommend you put your name on the ballot, and let the people of Davenport decide whether or not they want you making decisions for them. In terms of from a perspective, and again, I've shared this before, and I will share it again, I think communication is absolutely of the most importance, so when notification was received sometime in August, I think the council should have been made aware of such situation sometime before November 18th, right? I mean, I'm not saying the next day, I'm not even saying August, I'm not even saying September, but I mean, at some point in time, council should have been made aware of, hey, this is what's going on, before it obviously hits an agenda item. My biggest concern here is that we have a will that is quite honestly pretty clear as to what the wishes were, and now the city of Davenport is being asked to essentially forego, forego that, but was never a part of the discussion, even from hearing from Alderman McGinnis today, it's clear that the city really didn't have a say, and that's certainly doesn't appear that that was the direction left by Mr. Victor when he said that such is to be selected and managed by Quad City Arts and the city of Davenport. That's my issue, I mean, how things are handled is important, yes, I don't disagree, let's have something nice, but it's important that we follow procedure, it's important that wills are followed, there's a reason that there's law when it comes to wills, and why we have probate court, and, you know, this could have been handled different if the council would have been made aware by those that were making these decisions, clearly not our city, clearly not our staff, perhaps we would be having a completely different conversation, but the manner in which it's been handled makes it very, very difficult for me to approve, so unless there's some new information that surfaces between now and next week, I will be a very, very hard no. See no one else from council, we can move on, I'll ask that that one remain on discussion. Item number nine, resolution approving the reallocation of a portion of the local sales and service tax revenue designated for capital improvements to parks operations. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address number nine? So please step forward, state your name, order, address.
William Pamperon, Seventh Ward. I'm a numbers person, and again, it's very non-transparent when you say a portion, give me numbers, I want to know. Also like to know is, how much money does that actually generate in one year? Earlier this year, we've approved a lot of park improvements, why all of a sudden they need all this extra money? Again, I want numbers.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Judith Lee, Second Ward, I haven't said much for a very long time, so I'm making up for lost time. I'm going to read you two sections of your code, 3.20.020 and 3.20.030. The first one says allocation of revenues, any revenues from the local sales and service tax shall be allocated 60% for property tax relief. relief and 40% for capital improvements. This allocation shall remain fixed and shall not be changed except as provided by state law or by other provisions of this chapter. Point 030 says reallocation of revenues. This says revenues allocated for capital improvements, the 40%, may be used to fund other lawful purposes as critical needs arise. The council may allocate these revenues to other purposes by resolution upon a two-thirds majority vote. I've got some concerns with this. When I was here for the presentation yesterday, it said up to 40% for capital improvements. The presentation said that, the code does not. It says 40%. It also says a 60% for property tax relief shall remain fixed. It's not flexible. And that, quote, "Only revenues allocated for capital improvements may be used to fund other lawful purposes as critical needs arise." Reallocation of the 40% can only be done as critical needs arise, um, and it must be so critical that the one-time vote must be done with a two-thirds majority. It's not just a, well, if you feel like it, do it. There's a two-thirds majority. A foreseeable need for funds known for years cannot be considered a critical need and should only be done if really needed. Alderman Dunn and I, when we were on council together, we begged to know how much maintenance was going to cost. No one ever said to me anyway that it would also involve permanent and temporary staffing until I saw it on social media, but out by the city. The cost of maintenance outside of flooding was sometimes more than $200,000. I also heard $400,000 a year, but I couldn't get a good answer. We stated that maintenance should not come from the Parks Department because the Parks Department was already overburdened, but we couldn't get an answer to how, just reassure us it would be taken care of. This reallocation for Main Street Landing is intended to be every year, so it's not a critical need situation. This was a foreseen need for years and is needed for years in the future. Or it's also one that's so important to reallocate that it needs two-thirds vote. And I would assume this would have to be a two-thirds vote every year, and it's not up to 40%. So apparently the city code sections, you're either adding up to 105% of a budget, which can't happen, and/or we're playing fast and loose with code wording, adding up to 40% where it doesn't exist. Is that the answer? I assume city code is consistent with state code, so modifying it for this annual critical need would require action by the state legislature? Change six cycles or three cycles by the council with a two-third vote every year on a resolution? Sounds like the reallocation per code is intended to be a one-time thing, not into the foreseeable future. What, there was a lot of money, a lot of numbers thrown around yesterday at management update, and there was going to be more, if I remember right, than was actually needed. What was the rest of the money going to be used for? It can't be used for property tax relief, per the code, and shouldn't be placed in a rainy day fund. We definitely need more funds for road and street repair. Let's use extra funds for that. I suggest that staff find another way, we've had years now, to come up with somewhere about $260,000 a year for operation and maintenance of Main Street Landing, other than asking council to make a two-thirds vote every year, when that doesn't fit the purpose of reallocation of the 40%. You've had years to re-address this, and it hasn't happened. Council should not have been, um, this should not have been put on the agenda, and your corporation council should have caught this before having council put in a position on this code. Why don't we use the recommendation in the, um, Parks Department comp plan that says, "Seek and create partnerships with businesses and foundations"?
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, order, address.
Cheryl Shaina, Third Ward, and my question had to do with the numbers being said yesterday. I heard 1.2 million, and then it got reduced down to 1.18 million, and it kept always circling back to Main Street Landing. And I really thought I understood when that was being discussed and that was being approved, that the money for the operations of Main Street Landing was not going, that it was going to be self-sufficient. Main Street Landing was going to be self-sufficient and paying for its own self. And we learned in the last, what, couple, three months, that the river's edge still is not profitable, and that's one of the issues I had with this, um, all along, was when would it actually not be an expense? So these, this difference in money just happens to be about the same amount that they're telling us it's going to cost to maintain Main Street Landing. So without talking to Judith, we were kind of on the same page. Is this going to be something every year that they're going to be asking for funds to be reallocated? Or is this something that, once it's up and running, it's going to have a set budget, in which case then they have to stick to the budget and not be trying to take from the other parks? Because I believe we had an understanding that Main Street Landing was not going to take from any of the other parks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? Is there anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Ms. Gerlach, could you, can you come up and clarify? I'm looking at the slides that were at, I know you probably don't have them available, and why we would say up to on two different things. I think there's an explanation there.
Yes, Pasha Gerlach, CFO. So the first, um, section of that slide was what we currently have, which is 60% goes towards property tax relief, and then 40% goes to capital improvement projects. The second portion is what we are proposing to do, um, which is we can't change the capital improvement portion of 60%. I'm sorry, we can't change the property tax relief of 60%. So that will remain steady, and then, um, depending on what funds are needed for parks operations, up to 5% will be allocated to parks operations, and then anything that's left over, up to 40%, because if no funds is needed, all of it would go towards capital improvements. So that is why you have up to, it's because it's proposed, it's the original, and then what is proposed.
So that gives us flexibility each year. If capital improvements needs more, it can be up to 40%, or if parks needs more, it can be up. So if, if one is, one is, is, if 5% goes to parks operations, when your 35% would go to capital improvements, is that kind of the idea?
That is correct.
Thank you. Or 3% and whatever. Right. Got it.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And there was, I believe, a memo that you sent today following up that you have sent several times about Main Street Landing, and there were costs, and this was January of 2024.
That is correct. So in September of 2024, there was a memo that was created, and I forwarded that information to council. Um, I believe, um, city administrator Gleason forwarded it to you all yesterday evening, so I think that was received. Some of the costs did, um, kind of increase with inflation and things like that, but not substantially. Um, I believe that memo is correct in most of the costs that are on there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Pasha. So what I'm hearing, because I wasn't here yesterday either, I apologize, um, this is ongoing, because the way she just described that, that if the money is in a certain, the general and then whatever, there, if there's always a fluctuation, that there's always going to be money that needs to be pulled to this. So this is, I won't be here, but this is ongoing, is what.
This would be an ongoing. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alderman Jobjin?
Thank you. Um, so if I heard correctly, thumbs up and thumbs down. So we're not going to have to vote on this each and every year. This is going to be a one-time vote going forth, right? And so, and again, this is a strategy to help relieve our general fund. We had a state representative that came up here and gave us a nice warning about property tax reform coming, and it's going to put constraints on municipal budgets, right? Ding ding ding, ring a bell. So I applaud staff for thinking of ways in which we can maintain flexibility to cover the expenses that we have. And so I'm supportive of this, and thank you.
Alderman Rickdun?
Thank you, Alderman Jobjin. I agree, but there's a lot of things we can take out of, that we're paying for out of the general fund that we really need to take a look at, so thanks.
Administrator Gleason?
Appreciate the opportunity, just for a quick comment. And, uh, and I know council already knows this, it was the comments, uh, by Alderman Jobjin. Uh, this really, in fact, is rather, uh, brilliant by our CFO. Uh, it's a very, uh, real conversation, uh, what's potentially likely going to happen at the state level in some fashion with property tax reform. This truly is very forward-thinking and trying to position the city, and it's a job well-done by her. So I appreciate, you know, that recognition by council.
Seeing no one else, I will just briefly say I too second those comments. Um, our finance department does a great job, and our CFO is certainly forward-thinking and preparing us for what we know is to come, unfortunately, in the near future. I, I would just say, in light of knowing what's probably down the road, we should also continue to look at other ways, like Alderman Dunn said, of relieving our general fund. Seeing no one else from council, I will move on to item number 10, resolution of agreement and support for Hot Glass Inc.'s fundraising efforts for a public art display at Main Street Landing. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Rickdun?
Just to be clear, as I said yesterday, no city money, right? Correct.
Anyone else from council? Seeing none, that item moves on. Item number 11, motion approving change order number one in the amount of $81,000 to Navient of Verona, Wisconsin for the Managed Services Agreement for On-Base Support and Maintenance. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, item number 11 moves on. Item number 12, motion approving a contract with the Salvation Army in the amount of $50,000 to support its housing and homelessness initiatives in Davenport. Anyone from the public wishing to address item 12? Please step forward, state your name, order, address.
Hi, uh, my name is Kelly Larned, um, with the Salvation Army, um, up on 100 Kirkwood Boulevard in Davenport. Um, I wanted to thank you for considering our, um, I don't know if you consider it an application for, um, the dollars. We, um, had been funding our shelter as we utilize hotels in Davenport for families, um, we, for families that are, have children under the age of 18. Um, and so, um, we serve anywhere, we were serving anywhere between 41 to 71 help families every night. So we have hundreds of people in Davenport hotels. Um, with ARPA funding that we received from Scott County, um, that ended in September, and so we reached out to other, um, community members, other foundations, the city, um, and you guys graciously, um, will hopefully accept, um, funding us and the $50,000 to continue to house the families. We currently, right now, have 156 families waiting to come into shelter, and 132 of those are identifying to be in debt in the Scott County that are literally homeless, meaning that they are staying in their car or they're on the streets. And so it is a desperate need that these people need somewhere to go. Um, and so I am asking you, begging you to, um, give us this, these dollars to be able to continue to do what we do. Um, and not only are these families put into a hotel where they're safe, um, they're going to school, we, we have a contract, we contract with the Davenport Schools and make sure the kids are going to school, um, and they are giving a case manager for up to 90 days to get them out of the situation as quickly as possible, so that they're not being into the hotels for that long, that they can get into a place of their own. Um, so I thank you for the time and thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward, state your name, order, address.
Judith Lee, Second Ward. I absolutely support the money for the Salvation Army as well as for Project Renewal. I absolutely support the original request of $100,000 from each one. Um, I have expressed to all of you in an email about some concerns on the process, and process is important, that was used to cut the request in half, that was done, what I believe is in violation of open meeting laws. And I provided you with an email from the attorney from IPIB, the Iowa Public Information Board, that says if you have outside meetings, you can, I mean, in, you know, meetings that are closed outside the public eye, you can talk about information, but you can't lead towards consensus or decisions. And it sounds to me, in these two cases, that people were talked to individually, I don't know who, I don't know how many, I don't even know if it was all of you, that cut it down from 100,000 to 50,000. I would like to see the 100,000, and I would have loved to have the opportunity to be able to say that, but the agenda item doesn't. So I'm expressing my concern, not on the money, I'm expressing my concern on the process that was used, that I believe, based on the attorney at the IPIB, is in violation of open meeting laws as it relates to meeting individually or even in small groups, leading towards a consensus or a decision. In this case, it was clearly a decision to cut from 100,000 to 50,000, and that was in your background information.
Thank you. I tried to ask for the proof. Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward, name, order, address.
Lakana Nixon, Seventh Ward. Um, I am so happy, because of, what was it, like, two weeks ago, I was here speaking about the homelessness area, so I am so happy to see this. Um, I wish it was more though. Uh, I'm happy that you are doing this for the families, because I know that they help families, and of course, if there's children involved, absolutely they need help. But I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? If not, I will move to council. Is there anyone from council? Alderman Gripp?
Um, I just had a question for staff. What are the types of funds that are being used to provide this?
Um, we're proposing heritage funding.
How much money do we have left in the heritage fund?
If my memory serves me right, I believe it's anywhere between 5 and 5.5 million.
Okay. Um, I, I personally think that this particular, uh, request fits squarely in what the heritage dollars were meant to be used for, and I would, uh, support, um, funding this at the full 100,000 request.
Do you have a motion, Alderman Gripp?
I would make a motion after further discussion, if there is any.
Uh, see anyone else?
I make the.
Oh, hold on. Alderman Kelly?
I was trying to see what rabbit hole you were going down, and I would like to second that motion when you make that motion, because this is something near and dear to me.
I make the motion to amend the agreement from $50,000 to $100,000 with the money coming out of the heritage fund proceeds.
I hear a motion in a second to amend that agenda item. Please roll call. Real quick, any discussion on the motion? Sorry. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Can we get it?
Yes.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. McGinnis?
Yes.
No, it was not. Yes.
Yes. Gripp?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Reinert?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
R Dunn?
Yes.
T Dunn?
Yes.
Ann Newton?
Yes.
And yes, this chair?
Thank you. And with that, it has been amended. Seeing no further discussion, that item moves on as amended to 100,000. Item number 13, motion approving a contract with Project Renewal in the amount of 50,000 to support the second phase of their youth program expansion and renovation project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward, state your name, order, address.
Good evening. Excuse me, I feel fine, I just don't sound so great, so, um, thank you for your consideration. I'm Anne Schruckrath, a resident in the Third Ward and the director of Project Renewal. Project Renewal's youth program is filled with activities to keep youth engaged. youth engaged, such as academic support. This helps fill in gaps when kids may not be able to absorb all the information at school or get help from home, such as socializing and friendship building. Kids develop important skills through socializing, such as sharing setting, sharing and setting boundaries and problem solving. They also learn how to develop strong, healthy relationships through interacting with their peers. We help them decrease their screen time and increase physical activity. We help them learn to care for their mental and physical health. We help them personally grow. Personal growth through that, they learn how to have harmless fun, positive risk-taking, and exploring their own interests and our community. This increases their capacity for learning, teamwork, problem-solving, self-awareness, et cetera. We provide positive role models. We give children the opportunity to interact with positive adult role models. Our staff and volunteers are enthusiastic and caring. They have integrity and good character. Our kids are likely to emulate them, too. It also gives our kids and teenagers a sense of community while working with others. The formation of these role modeling relationships helps develop confidence, self-esteem, and skills needed to be successful in school and in life. Overall, the more healthy, positive adult relationships that a kid or a youth has in their life, the more likely they are to thrive in all areas long after they have become adults themselves. Project Renewal is unique. We serve kids in all grades, K through 12, other than the Davenport Schools or a school. I don't know any other nonprofit that does that. We help them to follow their youth development needs. We operate in a neighborhood, offering a family-like atmosphere and accessibility. There's no charge ever for any of our services. This is budget relieving to a family's household finances. Our retention rate averages 95% over five years. Youth stay with us through high school and graduate with a plan to be productive as an adult. While we directly serve youth, we provide family stability and our surrounding neighborhood stability, and also have a ripple effect that impacts our whole Quad City region. Historically, Project Renewal has been intentionally taken, took root in a neighborhood for 51 years now, in our most fragile, oldest neighborhood. It was run by all volunteers for the first 18 years. We are a local grassroots organization. Our programming helps youth create their path for a meaningful future, who become our future leaders and members of our workforce in our community. Our presence increases livability. We are a neighbor, a hub, restoring or renewing lives and properties that have been neighborhood eyesores or trouble spots. We advocate and spread awareness of these concerns. Our neighborhood presence is a bright spot for youth and others countering disinvestment, eyesores, and problems. The stability we provide for our neighborhood and instill in our youth aligns with the Q2030 belief in creating safe spaces where youth can be engaged, educated, and hopeful for their future. Neighborhoods are one of the core units that affect regional health. Our service aligns with the City of Davenport's five-year consolidated plan priorities identified. We support human needs for our citizens, mental health, and building life skills. Project Renewal's number-one priority is actively supporting youth to realize their full potential. One of my privileges, living right here, has been watching our kids grow up, now crossing paths with some of them as adults in our community, being productive members of our workforce. In financial institutions, you'll find our kids, who are adults, healthcare systems, educational institutions, manufacturers, museums, restaurant managers, artists, postal carriers, college students, volunteers, and our very own Project Renewal staff. Our neighborhood may be the first neighborhood they grow up in, but it goes on to translate to many others. It's the ripple effect. My neighborhood, your neighborhood, and on and on. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item?
There were a couple other people planning to come tonight and couldn't, but they submitted some comments that a couple of our kids volunteered to read.
Thank you. Please step forward.
Hi, my name is Braylon. I'm in fourth grade. Project Renewal is so much more than buildings in a park. We are the best kids, many who live in the central community circle area. With love, guidance, and support, they have the opportunity to achieve their full potential. We are the most dedicated and fun staff, work-study students and volunteers who put their hearts into everything they do. We are a place where manners matter and homemade slime and beaded bracelets are core elements of a happy childhood. We are family. Like any family, we take pride in our neighborhood. We pick up trash, share our park with everyone, and host a neighborhood Halloween celebration. That includes kids and families from our neighborhood, as well as other programs like ours. Some of our staff live on site because that is how we meet our neighbors, learn about the challenges they face, and become good neighbors ourselves. We believe our presence in the same location for over 50 years helps stabilize our neighborhood. We are more than buildings in a park, but we rely on those things to house the kids and workers and volunteers and our programming. So your support means the world to us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Cameron. I'm in seventh grade, and I'm here on the behalf of Bill Who Can Make It Tonight. Project Renewal is a sound investment for the city because it provides a productive and nurturing place for our students after school. Participants come from the neighborhood and have a safe place to spend those critical and important after-school hours. The students are given snacks, attention, and plenty of support. I started volunteering there just over two years ago, and I have found it to be an amazing return on a small investment of my time. I am very impressed by the staff, volunteers, and range of activities for the students, but I'm most impressed by the children. Every request for assistance from them begins with a please, and when help is given, followed by a thank you. High expectations are consistently maintained. Parents are evolved and appreciative, as evidenced especially by those who themselves were attendees at the Treat House. Project Renewal's staff communicates with the classroom teachers and enables students to complete their homework during the after-school time spent with the Project Renewal staff. Project Renewal has a great relationship with the St. Ambrose students, who provide music, fitness, and art-appreciate experiences. I am lucky enough to be retired from teaching in the Davenport School District and have many, and have many different volunteer opportunities, including tour guides at the Figgy, helping out at Cafe Unvined, delivering books to the library. All wonderful, but nothing has felt quite like the privilege it has been to spend time at Project Renewal, and I encourage you all to visit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward, state your name, order, or address.
Hello, my name is Pete J. Slavodjin, Third Ward, and I have happily volunteered for 12 or so years at Project Renewal. And the reason I keep going is because it's such a wonderful program. And I've seen how this program is beneficial, not only to the involved students and parents, but to the whole community. In its 51-year history, there's been continual growth and success. Presently, there's a physical expansion plan to ensure that the positive continuation of Project Renewal keeps going. This is where we hope the city will help. Project Renewal strives to provide students and their families the best experience the community can offer. The Project Renewal area is a fragile community where families don't always have the best opportunity to experience what the Quad Cities has to offer. What does Project Renewal do? As you've heard most of this before, on a daily basis, there's an educational component where the kids are doing homework and with emphasis on math and reading. Other opportunities are studies in health, physical fitness, career planning, music, art, crafts, offered by volunteers and others in the community that may come and visit our site, or we may go and visit them at their sites. We take field trips, so we're learning about the community and the surrounding area. In order to keep these programs going, the physical plant needs to expand, and that's the programming that's happening right now. Budget-wise, you would be wisely helping Davenport students become our future solid citizens, as we've seen for years already, as they've gone through the program and into adulthood, and becoming those solid citizens. And we see this as a continuing process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Judith Lee, Second Ward. My concerns with process for this item are the same as the last one. I support $100,000. I appreciate what you've done for Salvation Army, and I hope you do the same for Project Renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward, state your name, order, or address.
Cheryl Shagna, Third Ward. And based on what I've just heard and what I read for the backup information, I would request that you do the same thing that you just did for the Salvation Army, and take it from the Heritage Fund and move it up to $100,000. That is our future.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address this item?
Wakana Dixon, Seventh Ward. I agree. You guys should give them the $100,000, and these children came up here and spoke, and I just love that. You guys are the future of our community, and keep going. So I hope you guys help them out.
Anyone else from the public? Please step forward, state your name, order, or address.
Alex Cahill, I'm a resident of Eldridge, but I'm the President of the Board of Directors for Project Renewal. I just want to really thank the City Council for considering the request. It means a tremendous amount to the board and the whole organization. As part of Phase Two, the actual building that we are reconstructing, it's called the Treat House. If you come after school around 3:00, you're going to see students there. And the reason we call it the Treat House is one of the first things they do is they get a treat. And I would invite you, especially if we are able to get the request approved at any time, to come down and come around 3:00, and I think it'll put a smile and a warm feeling on your face. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address this item? Council, Alderman Gripp.
Thank you. First off, I wanted to thank the two young people for getting up here to speak, because I'm telling you, I've seen a lot of adults get up there. It's hot, the lights are on you, it's very intimidating, and you guys knocked it out of the park. Very cool. And also, our meetings aren't usually this long, so thank you for, you guys stuck it out for a long time. I have the same question of staff. How are we funding the $50,000? And then I have a question. I'll let you answer that question first.
We propose the same heritage funding.
And am I correct in assuming that the roughly $5,000 to $5.5 million that we have in the Heritage Fund, we have that collecting interest, and then the interest goes back into the Heritage Fund?
I would love to answer that, but I'm going to have to refer to our CFO.
Thank you.
Currently, the interest that's earned on those Heritage Funds is being reallocated to the general fund.
Okay. All right. That is, that is good to know. I don't, I don't think it fits quite as squarely as the previous one, but I would also, you know, rough math is, this fund is probably generating $350,000 to $400,000 a year in interest. So to me, it's a worthy thing to spend it on. I, you know, welcome any comments on whether we should do that or not.
Alderman Kelly.
I definitely think we should do that, because if we don't show, so first and foremost, I'm in the Fifth Ward, so I'm not in that ward, but the Third and the Fifth Ward are some really hard-hit wards. So if we don't show the respect and dignity that I sit up here and ask for every week, for every single portion of the City of Davenport, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Third and Fifth Ward, well, sorry, I'm forgetting about, hey, it's rough. It is rough. These three people, the way we neighbor and the things that we go without, I would be remiss, so I don't know how, I made a mistake again. I would like to make a motion to, for those folks to get the $100,000 from Heritage, because you guys, we're not supposed to clap, but y'all did a damn good job. So if, I'm telling you, if you, I'm telling you, Fourth and Seventh Grade, I was like, come on, Seventh Grade, don't let that Fourth Grade girl out show you, because, boy, she came up in here, she did her thing now. But I'm just saying, correct me, what is the correct way to make this motion?
Alderman Kelly, I see that there's others that want to speak. Can I have them speak and then come back to you and Alderman Gripp?
Sure.
Thank you. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Yeah, I have the honor of living near this wonderful organization, who, these people have done, they always show up, they showed up earlier in the year, they show up with the crew, they show up for the cleanups in the neighborhood, they showed up when we did the census, they were the faces when we did the census promotion. We needed kids, and boy, did they show up, and they are little faces were all over our things, pushing people to do the census. So they always show up, and they always give back, and they've been doing that for 50 years. So, thank you. Anne hasn't been doing it, none of these people have been doing it for 50 years, but it goes a long way. So thank you for everything you do, and you guys were fantastic tonight. I think you know that. I hope you do. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lynch.
Thank you. I would like to echo Alderman Gripp on your patience and three hours. I mean, that's really, really impressive, and you've just been sitting there very patiently. So kudos to you, and thank you so much for sticking it out and getting up and speaking. I don't know how the math maths, I guess, quite like Alderman Gripp or CFO, but I, if, and I do know there are a lot of entities in the City of Davenport that could really use funding as well. I know they're both wonderful organizations that give back to the community, and I would fully love to support giving them the 100 instead of the $50,000. So I'm all for that, but I just wanted to mention that if for some reason the math doesn't quite math the way it should, I have, I have extra money in my CISP fund that I have like a lot of it. So I would be happy to help supplement some of that difference if, if it's needed and if, if I'm allowed to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch. Alderman Reinert.
Thank you. All I want to say is that children are our future, and if we don't make the investment now, we'll be responsible for what it could have been not, not being there. So I'm in favor of Alderman Kelly's desire to increase the funds to $100,000.
Thank you. Alderwoman Burkholder.
Thank you. I've known Anne for quite some time. My youngest kind of grew up knowing you, and then when she went to St. Ambrose, she got to volunteer. And I, the things that you guys do there, that she would come home and brag, even though she's graduated. And I will tell you, the students there loved to volunteer, and all the things that Project Renewal does is ama, it's just amazing. You two did a fantastic job. Keep it up. I am totally in favor and will absolutely second that. Tim Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to the second terms, I just-
Before I go to the second terms, I just briefly, I will echo all of my colleagues' comments in regards to how well our two young Davenport constituents did. Very impressive how you've been able to sit there so patiently and so professionally, and I will tell you that when I look at you, I see the future. So keep it up.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I don't know why I'm getting so emotional, I just see my face in these youngsters. I would like to make a motion to allocate $100,000 to Project Renewal.
Motion in a second. Can we please call a roll call?
Thank you.
Burkholder.
Yes.
Jobjen.
Yes.
T. Dunn.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Reinards.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
And Arden.
Yes.
Ten, yes, as chair.
Thank you. And with that, that also carries. Now we can move on to the last item on the finance agenda. Motion approving the purchase of 140 ballistic helmets and chin straps from Team Wendy of Cleveland, Ohio, in the amount of $89,896.08, CIP number 63026. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Is there anyone from council? Seeing none, item number 14 moves on, and with that, I would ask Alderwoman Lynch to please set our agenda.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton. I would like to place items one through 14 on a consent agenda, with the exception of placing item number eight on discussion. Bless you.
I hear motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Hearing none, with that, our agenda is finally set. I yield the floor back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch. The next area, other ordinances, resolutions, or motions, there are none for tonight. Next area, is there any public business other than what was discussed already? Please name, order, address, five minutes, thank you.
Cheryl Shagna, Third Ward. I'm on the letter T, and I'm going to talk about transparency in government. Transparency, what exactly is it? What does it do? It ensures relevant details, and that informed decisions and actions are made. The decisions are easily acceptable, the information is understandable to everyone involved. Fundamentally, transparency is a principle. It's about openness. It's about communication. Tonight, we learned a lot about lack of communication. I heard lack of communication causes fears, leads to misunderstanding. Obviously, we have some communication issues in the city. The fundamental principle of transparency creates openness, leads to communication, leads to accountability, because when it is done in an open way without secrets, the people, the public, can trust that what is being done is honest and fair. The trust factor is very important. At this point, building trust is important. I refer to it as like a bank account. Taxpayer trust. We're giving you the money, and we're trusting you to be stewards of that fund. Said over and over, it's not city money, it's taxpayer money. Your actions also contribute to our trust or lack of trust. My vote for you as an alderman-at-large, mayor, or an alderperson, is a deposit in my bank account, my trust account, and I'm trusting that you are going to do the job to the best of your ability. Talked in the past about honesty and integrity, being kin, and the opposite of that is liars and thieves. Lying by omission steals my trust. Lying puts my trust in the negative account. Transparency, the quality of being open to public scrutiny. Embracing transparency leads to a more equitable and responsible society where individuals can hold our leaders accountable. When you are responsible, when you are transparent, we become more responsible, transparent. Sharing info is the most... In the most open, honest, and accurate way, cannot be underestimated or undervalued. We talked about the value of investments tonight. Your transparency, your honesty cannot be underestimated its effect on the public, its value in the public. Complete transparency. Transparent practices enhance public participation, reduces the potential for unethical behavior and corruption. We've talked a lot about corruption in this city. It would be nice to talk about more positive things, because I heard that tonight also. We've talked about that in the past. I'd love to get up here and say how great everybody is. Soon as that happens, I'll be the first one in line. Lot of you are fantastic. We still have some that don't seem to understand transparency, that don't seem to understand openness, that don't seem to understand that no communication leads to fears, no communication leads to misunderstandings, no communication leads to problems like losing a million-dollar fountain that could have been a tourist attraction in the city. So I would love to keep making deposits in my trust account with the city, and frankly, at this point, it's more dependent on you than it is on me. Frankly, if I don't trust someone, I am going to give them five bucks, let alone 50, or 5,000 or more.
Thank you. Next, please.
J.J. Condon, Third Ward. I was across the street, and on a whim, I came over because I wanted to express my gratitude for you guys in like two and a half hours into this meeting, and I realized I might be a week early. But I'm here with you now, and yeah, I don't mean to contrast or lay over top of the last comments so directly, but for me, I think I actually have a lot in common, like transparency and credibility, transparency and accountability are very important to me, but for me, the well of credibility is your heart for Davenport. And they say in any positive relationship, you need to say like 10 nice things for every one bad thing, and that's what I believe and what I see in so many of you, and I just wanted to thank you, because I know some of you guys are leaving the council and the mayor's seat, and I wanted to celebrate your time on council, and thank you, and some of you are stepping in. And for me, my love language is you gotta say 10 positive things about Davenport for every one critical or skeptical thing, because I need to hear it. And also, thanks to staff, it's the end of the year, my sentiments are keeping you from adjournment, but I just wanted to celebrate you guys and say thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Ashana Nixon, Seventh Ward. I didn't want to get up here and talk about this earlier, we were talking about healthcare because, and so I don't want you to think I'm talking about that, but on the news yesterday, it was said that Genesis received a one-star rating. We are in danger here with healthcare. Me, myself, I'm considered, I'm pretty healthy, you know, just little minor, little things getting older, but I... It's sad to say, and I've worked at the hospital before, that I would, I am scared to walk up in there, knowing that either one, they're not going to do... I've seen it with my... Well, I've seen it with somebody in the last two months, where they walked out, I've seen it actually twice in the last four years, where the two people, the same person has walked out twice of Genesis with broken bones, with no treatment. Medicare, they're rated one star, and we only have one hospital, well, I'm sorry, we have two, and then you close up the one on the West End. My father, before he passed, had dealt with some sepsis, and I think they said it was like 50 something percent of people leave Genesis, not leaving with sepsis. Sepsis can kill you. And I know for a fact that my father was released from a hospital probably a few times where he shit enough. We have to do, and I... We have to do something about the healthcare here. I know a lot of you get money from Genesis, Mercy One, when you're running for office. That's just because it's in the papers. If they're not getting money from Genesis, let me correct myself, getting money from people who work for Genesis, and they're giving you donations in whatever for your campaigns. But while you're getting that, we should be worried about the healthcare that we're receiving here in Davenport. I go all the ways to Trinity and Bittendorf to receive care. I don't care if I'm having a heart attack, I will get to Bittendorf. The wait times are terrible, and I don't know if y'all guys can do anything about this, but the people, all of you, your lives are in risk because of the subpar healthcare that we receive in this area. You going at waiting room, I used to work there, people wait for eight hours. I seen a lady give birth on the floor of the waiting room while working there. And I just want to say, I'm going to wrap it up. Thank you so much for having a heart and showing us that you actually have a heart tonight. Usually, you're looking down, but thank you so much for doing it tonight. I appreciate that. So one time in the two years I've been down here, I finally have one thing to respect you on. I think that's great. There's so much more, there's $5,000 in that account. There's more homeless on the street. Salvation Army can only do so much. We got Humilia Mary, there's no winter shelter open. So let's make things happen. I know y'all tired of giving away money, I get that, but we got to get these people off the street. Salvation Army's doing great, I love them for that, but there's Humilia Mary and then the other winter shelter, none of them are open. King's Harvest. We got to get these places open, we got to get these people off the street, or else they're going to freeze to death. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Dan Gosa, Eighth Ward. I'm going to come up here with a different hat on at first. I just wanted to announce that Davenport Little League has our lights set now. They did not pull wires yet, because we don't want them stolen. We know how that's going on, but I just wanted to let you all know that. Thank you to every alderman past and present that have helped us along that path. I want to give a huge shout out to Chad Dyson with Parks and Recs. He's always been awesome to work with on that stuff. I think I've been the Little League president for a dozen years. So aldermen's done and done, always come up and help out whenever we need something, they're greatly appreciated. Alderman Reinhardt's helped out quite a bit, too. Alderman Gripp for letting his kid umpire for us quite a bit, so we always appreciate that. And then my other thing I wanted to say, I wanted to thank you all for your service. I know you get beat up a lot, any elected official does, right? You're not going to make everybody happy. For the outgoing council members, thank you very much for your service, dedication to the city. It's a very thankless job for very little pay. Everybody thinks that you make a huge payday. And so thank you for that, for the new incoming council members, good luck for the returning council members, you know, keep doing what you're doing. And then on another note, I just wanted to say, as we're going to be going back up into session, January 12th, if you want to reach out to me and sit down and go over your legislative priorities, I'm more than willing to do. I know Mayor-elect Gordon has reached out to me, we're going to sit down on that. I do serve on transportation, public safety, local government, all things that you all are interested, and a few other ones. So again, thank you very much for your service. Next time, try to cut the meetings down a little bit longer, some of you need to cap yourselves on your time limits as well, because you went way over five minutes, but thank you again, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
LeKanadix, Seventh Ward. My sister, she already kind of took some of my talking points, but I'm going to proceed. As you all know, I think tonight is going to be the coldest night that we had this winter so far. I got off of work at 8:00. I worked 12 and a half hours today. Perfect day. And there is someone sleeping outside, right out front of Walgreens on Locust. I have drove past and delivered food, you know, and believe... Let me start this. I work overtime, and most of the money that I make working overtime, I feed homeless, I buy blankets, I basically give it away. My heart, that's just my heart structure. Every Sunday, me and my sister, we help another person that feeds, we go and volunteer every week. And it really... It really bothers me that we have such a big issue, and I thank you guys for doing what you've done tonight, because those children, they deserve support. And then also, the shelter, they deserve support, because they support families. But here goes the challenge. We know that there's over $5 million in that account, and this is what's going to make... Yeah, you see, I'm smiling, right? What I'm going to urge y'all guys to do is do the same thing for an emergency shelter. Emergency shelter. Say in the middle of the night, something happens, they got somewhere to go, you know, at any waking moment. So I know everyone's in a giving heart, you know, it's holidays, blah, 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 blah. You know, we're all buying our Black Friday deals, things like that, so have a giving heart and give to an emergency shelter. Like I said a couple weeks ago, we have, we live in a, we're living in a very different time, that people that have great jobs just don't have jobs anymore. And just to be honest, my job where I'm at now, I have people that work for John Deere. And all of a sudden, John Deere is down, so they have to... I've heard them talk about the pay cuts that they take, because they have to get a whole other job, and they're not making like they're making there. And it... So just think that one person that lost their job, maybe they don't want to find another job, because they want to go back, you know, and then holiday depression and everything else, mental health, you know, people just don't want to be homeless. It takes one bad thing to happen for someone to fall off their horse. And to be honest with you, I think most of you guys know my dad passed away almost two years ago, and I wanted to quit. My rent went unpaid, it got caught up, because I realized I had some, you know, I had to have somewhere to go. It takes one thing for someone to fall off their horse. What? But you have to realize the strength that it takes for that person to be like, okay, I have to pay my rent, you know, I have to work those extra hours, I have to, you know, push, keep pushing forward. Because I had my dad, and I took care of my dad, both me and my sister, we did. My dad, he deserved to be taken care of well, and that's what we did, but emotionally, you know, it takes one shakeup and you can be that homeless person. So, you know, I hear a lot of people say bad things about homeless people, you know, and they don't want help, and oh, it's this, oh, it's that. You're probably absolutely right, but you guys are elected officials, y'all guys can make the difference. What if that one person that's in the shelter right now, like, oh, and they want to get on their feet and be a productive person of the community? Why not? So, emergency shelters, they need your help, too, and I... We've said it many times, I know you guys see these people out here on these streets. I know you do. I know you guys aren't blind because you're driving cars, you know, you can see, but I just want to share that, because me and my sister, we do a lot. We do what we can, and like I said, the overtime that I do, I donate, I really do. We had some homeless people outside of my job, and I got them a hotel room for a night. And y'all know how much hotel rooms are? I went without that. But guess what? They had a nice, clean place to get theirself together, and you know, just have that heart.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Give me 10 seconds. I... Judith Lee, Second Ward.
So I wanted to say that publicly and apologize publicly. And I will thank you all tomorrow, because you still have an executive session. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any council follow-up comments? Very good. Next, will an alderperson please move to go into executive session to evaluate the performance of an individual in closed session as requested by that individual pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 21.5. Motion is second, has been moved to go into executive session. Before I have Mr. Crupp call the roll, council will adjourn the meeting. After the executive session, will not return to council chambers. Mr. Crupp, please call the roll.
Burkholder.
Yes.
T. Dunn.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Reinert.
Yes.
Jobjed.
Yes.
And Ardone.
Yes.
10 yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, we're going to executive session. Everybody have a good week.